Thank you, Margo. Let's call the meeting to order at 6:30. The December 27th, 2022 meeting. We've got some folks here. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting and hope that everyone has or is having a wonderful holiday season. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on December 13th, 2022. There is a correction in those minutes. I don't think you guys are aware of it, so.
I'll approve the minutes for December 13th, 2020 with the correction of Ben Whelan's spelling of his last name.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item is audience of citizens. Any business to come before the board? Anybody here that something has they'd like to speak about? Jane?
Hi. Why do you have a question?
We have.
Any, any, all that?
We have, yes. I think everybody's had a chance. We've had a couple more applications, or not applications, yeah, requests. We have a very full agenda today. I expected the first meeting in January. We may actually have a couple of special meetings because it's such a long list of requests. But in January, we'll start having meetings about those requests and review them, give people an opportunity to come in and defend what they're asking for and all that kind of thing. So, I expected.
Will those be open?
They have to be. Yeah. Yeah. Anybody else?
Any update on the dump trucks coming?
Last I knew, was a couple of weeks behind. So, it should be here, it was scheduled for this week, so I would expect it to be here in a couple of weeks, within a couple of weeks.
Wait?
Yeah, it is great. Wait for the snow. Well, you know what? It's just like when you're buying the snow blower, you're buying the snow plow and you don't use it for the year. Anybody else? Next item on the agenda is the discussion of the steep grant recommendation to the Board of Finance. We talked about this already once when we were getting the, when the grant was coming through. But we did not actually have a recommendation from the Board of Finance to bring it to a town meeting. So, what we need to do is get a recommendation to the Board of Finance to move to the town for an expenditure of $1,000, or $100,000, which will supplement the $400,000 grant to, for equipment for all three of the public playgrounds in Town Deep River Elementary, which has a last bid was $200,000. It looks like it's going to go a little higher. And then the Plattewood and Devitt Park playgrounds as well. That comes with a 20% match from the, required, a match from the community. In all of the conversations, Board of Finance was certainly understood it was on board. If you guys are too, then we'll just get, I think if we have a motion to move to the Board of Finance, a request for $100,000.
Do we have to put all the money out and then get reimbursed, or how does this grant work?
It's a steep grant, it's a reimbursement.
Okay.
And that's what's happening with the steep grant from last year. We're expending it, and as we expend it, we're being reimbursed.
And usually, what's the turn, time turnaround reimbursement?
It's pretty quick if all the paperwork is done. Oftentimes, they, you know, they'll throw another piece of paper at you, but it's pretty quick.
Okay.
What was the amount?
$100,000.
Make a motion.
What's the total amount?
$500,000.
So, that's what you get to put out?
We put out 100, 20% of the $400,000 grant, 20% of the $500,000 expenditure, 25% of the $400,000 grant.
But you put the $400,000 first, and then you get reimbursement. Do we have to take a loan for that, or how does that work?
No, we have got that in our surplus money.
That was my, that was my question.
Yeah. No, that's all expended. Yeah, and you know, if we get, if we are able to do this for the 400, then we won't have to make the $100,000 expenditure, but it, nothing looks as if we're going to be able to do that.
It's 100 for 500,000.
Yeah, yep. 100 to make a $500,000 expenditure.
So, if we only, if we only cap out of $400,000, it doesn't cost us anything?
That's the way it's worked out so far in the one from last year.
Would you, would we have to put in that $100,000? I mean, wouldn't that be part of the?
That's not the way it was explained for last year's grant, so I'm going to, I'm assuming that the state is operating the same as they were last year, as they were last year. We'll see, obviously, we'll see, but that's not the way it was explained.
Well, I think it's a good thing because I guess I.
I think it's, yeah, it's a really good thing. It's a, it's a good amount of money to get something. We were, we were just getting ready to go to bid to do, or to put into the budget the elementary school, because that has aged out. It's not, it's right on the edge of where it's not safe. So, this, you know, hopefully, we can get this all done by next summer, but. So, anything else?
Make a motion, right?
Yeah, and I want to say it right. And make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Finance, an expenditure of $100,000 for the steep grant that is going to be no more than 500?
We're going to be, we're getting, we're getting awarded 400,000.
Getting, okay.
It's a $500,000 expenditure.
Yep.
We're contributing 20% of that.
So, the motion should be just to?
$100,000.
Initiate, authorize the Board of, or recommend to the Board of Finance, an expenditure of $100,000 toward the steep grant for the playgrounds.
Mm-hmm, yep.
I wanted to make sure.
Playground renovations. Good job. I should, I should have written it down.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is discussion. You guys have a resolution in front of you regarding the establishment of a capital and non-recurring expenditures fund. This, we tabled this, it was on the agenda for last week. It's been a little while to look at it. If you did, great. If you didn't, that's okay, too. What this is, is a recommendation, a strong recommendation from our auditors to create this expenditure, non-recurring expenditures fund. What that does is it takes any, this year is a great example of why they want to do this, because we authorized a lot of expenditures last, at the end of last fiscal year, and we took a big loan out to make those expenditures. Those expenditures were authorized for this year, and this year only, because we don't have a fund like this. At the end of this year, this fiscal year, any expenditures that were not made will have to be extended, we'll have to have another motion, another town meeting, all that kind of stuff. What this does is it allows for us to establish the capital fund. When we make a motion to make a capital expenditure that takes longer than that year, we don't have to, we don't have to go back. It's already, it's already been approved, it's already set aside, so we don't have to carry it over for the next year. As far as bookkeeping goes, it's much easier for the auditors, it's much cleaner, and it's also a lot less confusing for us, for the Board of Finance, and for the public, for us to keep going back with the same expenditures that don't get.
And this is, this is an auditor's recommendation?
Oh, yeah.
And obviously, they're not, it's, it's something that you, municipalities do.
Yeah.
For this, and we just have not done that for, probably never have, as a town.
We know, we never, we don't have, we do not have this. We have a capital, we have a capital fund.
Right.
But it's not, it's not authorized by a town meeting or by anything like that, so it's just something that we've named at that.
All the money in there will be specifically earmarked for a specific purchased project, whatever it may be.
Correct. That is the way that I would like to operate it. There is an opportunity to build a, I don't like the term, but a sinking fund. There's an opportunity to do that. I don't think, in my opinion, no money should go in here that is not, that is not earmarked and, and, and proven.
I'll let it sit that way, just so we know that where the money's going.
Yep, exactly.
Where does the money?
Transparency.
There are, part of this resolution, it talks about the creation of it, that it's to be used to account for financing of all or part of the planning, construction, reconstruction, or acquisition of a specific capital improvement. And that's what I like about that, specific capital improvement. The third one is going to answer a lot of questions, and will probably be talked about at length with the Board of Finance. Upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance and approval by a town meeting, there should be paid into such reserve fund, A, amounts raised from the issuance of debt restricted for such capital or non-recurring expenditures, a borrow, that's a, that's a borrow, right? B, amounts received from other sources, public or private, restricted for such capital or non-recurring expenditures. That actually, we'll be talking a little bit later. That's, that's a perfect example of the ARPA funds, or of the monies that the fire department has guaranteed us for, as the tanker truck purchase. Amounts, and then C, amounts authorized to be transferred there to, from the general fund cash surplus available at the end of fiscal, end of any fiscal year. That's us using our surplus, as we've been doing in the past. D, and this is the one we're going to talk about at length later, amounts raised by the annual levy of a tax not exceeding four mils for the benefit of such fund. If we determine that we want to add half a mil to purchase something, we can do that. This is where I think four mils is pretty high. And we should lower that. And that's why I want to keep this meeting open. I don't want to vote on this until we're having this conversation with the Board of Finance. E, surplus cash funds already held in reserve and available for capital and non-recurring expenditures. We actually did that last year. We had a capital fund of about $300,000 that we named and took a good portion of that in order, in a supplement to the borrow for all of the capital expenditures that we authorized at the end of last year. And the last one is surplus cash funds realized from the sale or leasing of capital assets. If we sell a fire truck for $300,000, we can put that money towards the purchase of another fire truck. So, and then it just goes on further to talk about the, the process, the recommendation of the Board of Finance and approval at a town meeting, all of the things that we already do. It just really, the whole purpose of this is to put the money somewhere that we don't have to keep on going back to it.
So, do we have to go to the town meeting to approve this?
Yeah.
Okay.
This, once we get, this goes to town meeting.
After the Board of Finance.
After Board of Finance, gets approved. Once it does that, the auditors working with, working with the, I call it interchange, sometimes I call them auditors, sometimes I call them accountants. Our accountants will help us move the monies that we've already set aside for capital funds into this fund, and then they sit, then they stay there until the funds are extended.
So, I'll make a motion to table this until we talk to the Board of Finance later on time.
My second.
Okay, great. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a discussion regarding an authorization resolution to the Board of Select, of the Board of Select. This, we talked about in the past as well, and we actually did everything except for the formalized resolution. This has to do with the food scraps or the waste reduction program. In order to do, in order to obtain $104,500 from the state to establish this program, we need to have a resolution that, or the Town of Deep River's Board of Selectmen accept the grants from the state, and also certification of incumbency, which is that the first selectman is authorized to direct and execute and deliver all, any of the documents that are required. We've talked about this, you know, we can explain it again a little bit more, but this is really just the formality involved in accepting the $104,500 that the state is providing for us to, to conduct this program over the next year, that will begin on February 1st. So, if we can have a motion to adopt this resolution.
I make a motion that we adopt the, the resolution dated December 27th, 2022, about the, accepting the grant not to exceed $104,500 for the purpose of establishing the pilot program.
I'll second it.
Okay, I think for the, for the record, let's, I'll read this into the.
Okay.
Yeah. Resolve that the Town of Deep River accepts grant funds from the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection's Sustainable Materials Management Program not to exceed $104,500 for the purpose of establishing a pilot program in the town's municipal solid waste collection site, transfer station. And B, further resolved that the pilot program will establish a process for food slash organics separation and unit-based pricing to determine whether they would help stabilize Deep River's municipal solid waste tipping fees. And B, and further resolved that Angus L. McDonald, as first selectman of the Town of Deep River, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of Deep River, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents. The undersigned further certifies that Angus L. McDonald now holds the office of first selectman, and that he was in, has held that office since April 21st, 2016. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is to discuss additional costs on the new tanker truck. I think Tim, our fire chief, is here to help explain this a little bit. But you guys have in front of you the report from the town, from the fire department's tanker committee. As you can see in this, they took quite a bit of work, working with six different dealers in New England to, to come up with a bid, go through the specifications. They came up with OnScene slash Spencer Truck Manufacturing at a price of $424,880. In addition to that, the recommendation from everyone is that they spend another $2,500, another $2,500 be spent for a radio system, tools and tool mounting, another 10 miscellaneous items that we just, you know, don't, can't, aren't thinking of right now for another five, which adds up to another 17, five to add on to that $424,880. That brings it rough, rough numbers to about $440,000, $445,000. The problem, what we need to talk about, and what we need to bring to the town, is that that's $440,000 beyond where we voted at the town meeting to, to, to spend on this truck. The fire department has generously offered $125,000 towards that, but that, while we didn't have a formal written agreement with the fire department, we did have a verbal commitment that that was what's going to be the expense. As a result of that, I think, at my recollection anyway, is that the Board of Selectmen, in their recommendations, budget-wise to the Board of Finance, and the Board of Finance's recommendations to the community, were that the town will contribute for $275,000, and the fire department's $125 would get us to the $400,000 that we expected that that truck was going to cost. With this going over, we need to go to the Board of Finance to request another 45. My recommendation is 50, just to make sure we don't have, we don't go over anything more. I know there's, there is $5,000 here, four miscellaneous items. So, I would leave it to the group here, whether we want to go with 445 or 450. But in, we, either way, we need, we need authorization from the town. We need to go to town money for additional expenditure.
Can I note a couple things?
Absolutely. As soon as I was done with my explanation, I was going to ask you to.
Yeah, so that, that number that you're, you're talking about, the 424,880, is actually less now, because when the committee specced the truck, the specification called for an international chassis, and we just recently found out in the last little over a month that International now has, is not making that chassis anymore. So, they had to switch gears. They now rewritten the contract with Freightliner chassis. They went out and looked at several other departments that have the same chassis with, on tankers, liked them. And the thing to remember with the chassis, with the International or Freightliner or, or any of them, you still have the same Cummins engine, the same Allison transmission, the same rear ends and front ends, and all of that stuff is all made by outside vendors for all the different manufacturers. So, there's about a $2,200 saving in that by going with the chassis.
2200.
22 and something. So, the new number is 422,594.
Plus the parts.
Plus the other, plus the other, plus the other thing, no.
I like Freightliners because they're right down the highway, three exits.
The, and if we can also note that the, the other bids were significantly, or the bids, they were proposals, were significantly higher.
Yep.
The committee did, with the consultant that the fire department hired privately, did some background checking on this, on this vendor and the dealer, and got a lot of positive feedback. Actually, our chairman was out in the Midwest and visited the department that has all Spencer fire trucks made, were very happy. They actually had another one ordered, so.
Where, where, where is the manufacturer? Where is Spencer here? It doesn't sound, I'm just curious.
I've actually never heard of Spencer.
They are a small, that's not, I'm not seeing it right here, but there's, from what I understand, they are a small company, kind of like Allen's and Mike's, the engine right now. They're a small, family-owned. The dealer is in Rhode Island, I want to say Michigan, but please don't hold me to that, probably right in front of me. Oh, South Haven, Michigan.
Oh, okay, there you go.
So, it was, it was good that the committee did their homework and was able to, and Spencer, OnScene Spencer Manufacturing met the spec, actually did very well, and it was, it was wonderful to see that they were a little better than three, two, so that's, and then we lost some time with them, we really wanted to do homework and make sure that they had good references and things like that, which the committee did, along with the consultant. So, we got all positive feedback.
Yep.
Yeah, this is a good example.
From where I, from where I said, if this is, you know, we moved this forward quickly because we had an opportunity with the borrow. We moved it forward, I think quicker than you guys anticipated. I think this is probably taken longer than, than we anticipated to get to here. Regardless, regardless of that, this is where we are, and I, I, I hope that we can all come to an agreement to move this forward, so we can keep this moving.
The, the radio, the question I had, the radio system, we've, we've, that was my question. We've already, we've already said that we're going to outfit all the new, a new radio system for the town.
My question too, but it's an interesting one.
It's, it's radio system and camera, but it's to move all the great new stuff that will now be going in the old tanker for the next two years while we're waiting for this.
So, it's, it's more of the.
It's the labor to move all the equipment.
Move the new system to the new truck from the alter.
Mount the antennas in the new truck, move all their new stuff over. We're not buying any new radios, it's all, radio's all part of the other.
Can you, not to, you chime in real quick, but you know, I think this is a good example of, you know, how we can create some capital up on some real estate.
Thank you very much, Nick. But this is not a public part of the meeting conversation, so.
Just for my, well, being, Tim, what's miscellaneous items? I don't know, what's?
That was a recommendation from the consultant, because you get down to pre-construction meeting, and, you know, it might be an extra intake that you may have, I shouldn't say you're missing intake, or something like that. It could be some plumbing things that you, when you're out there at the factory doing your pre-construction, and all of a sudden, you start laying things out, or maybe at the, you know, any one of the inspections where it makes sense to, to move this from where you have it in spec to here, or anything, there's always consultants, there's always things that come up like that when you're, when you're doing your inspections, and it's always nice to have a little money on the side so that you can take care of those things.
I just want to see a bottom line number when we go back to town.
Yep.
So, we don't run, have a problem we had a year and a half ago, when we came back and needed more money for the new fire truck, remember that? That's all I'm asking, just transparency upfront, when we go and ask them once, there's the bottom line number we're spending, and that's it.
Well, we can do that, we can do that, come up with that number tonight. We can say, the numbers that are in front of us from the committee are the numbers that we go with.
Yep.
Or we can, we can up those a little bit in that miscellaneous area, because I don't want to go back to the town either.
Right.
Now, if, if the committee has done a lot of work, this is the recommendation from the OnSite, OnScene Spencer truck, is, are they the folks that, that recommended that?
OnScene is the dealer out of Rhode Island, Spencer is the major manufacturer.
Okay, so OnScene is who recommended this? 5,000?
No, our, our consultant.
Your consultant, okay, great. So, I guess we should be confident that that's a reasonable number, that we're not going to have to go back to the town for, for additional lines, right?
The number as, is 440 and $94.
Right, so let's.
Was the new number I gave you, Jen?
Yeah.
That's with the 422, yep. So, why don't we, why don't we move to the Board of Finance? If you guys are in agreement that we want to keep this moving forward, that we move that 490, or 440, $440,094 to the Board of Finance to move to the town.
Now.
The, the bottom, the bottom line number should be $215,084.
Expend, well, you spend it from town. The bottom, the bottom line number that we're looking for is $40,094. That's the additional expenditure. The total expenditure of the town would be 215.
The number you said.
Yeah. Those are good numbers that we should have.
Is there any money in the old truck?
What we're actually looking for is an additional $40,094.
Yes. Now, my, my question on the $40,094 is that the fire, the fire department's put in ARPA requests, ARPA money request. Can, can that $40,000, when the time comes next month, take the 40,000 out of, out of, possibly out of their additional, or their ARPA request funds?
We can do that.
I don't, I don't have specifically what the department is asking.
Totally, we can put it in front of the town, if the town wants to do that. One of our decisions, if we're going to do that, we need to move that now, so we're going to do that ahead of doing the other ARPA spending, because this is only good for a certain amount of time. So, I have no problem doing that. You guys have the list, you see how many requests have been made. The fire department has made a considerable additional request from that money.
I don't have that right in front of me, what that means.
None of us do.
You know, an additional $40,000 isn't.
We have it, we have that 40,000, we have that in our surplus. We have that in our, we can spend it any way that you guys, any way that you guys want to come at it.
Either way, we're going to spend it.
I, I, I think it, I personally think it should come out of, out of surplus.
That's fine.
But, that's, you know, we're, we are, we are, as you're here at the Board of Finance, our, our surplus is.
Do we have to put down a deposit?
Yes, we do, yes.
Can I ask a question? While you're, seeing as how you're talking about that, this, Angus and I talked the other day, and I understand what you're saying, I hear what you're saying about the 400,000. I don't, I don't understand it, and I guess I don't agree with it at the end of the day. I have still, overhear what I was handed when we went upstairs and voted that night, I think it was April 11th, on the special, on the special meeting.
Yep.
And in this, in this document that everybody was handed, when you walked into that special meeting, it's $1.2 million that you were voting on, 400 for the truck, two for the fire truck, 200 for the plow truck, 500 for the radio system, and 100,000 for the SCBA's. Nowhere in here does it say anything about the fire department's contribution, nowhere. And I know what we, as a fire department and fire commission, put forth as a recommendation through our, our capital plan with the record, with the thought of the fire department chipping in 125,000. And at the time of this meeting, we had voted on, we had, we had put forth a recommendation at a monthly meeting, but it had to be tabled for one month, so we had no. at a monthly meeting, but it had to be table for one month, so we had no confirmation on it. We do now and I emailed you that we have that in a copy of the minutes or however you want. But even though I know what our contribution was, I'll be honest with you, I'm confused at what that end number is on that truck. To me, when I look at this as a taxpayer, not a fire chief, but as a taxpayer, I look at this as that we've already appropriated four hundred thousand dollars for that truck.
I think, I think, Tim, and we'll have further this conversation later on with the board of finance, that is the expenditure portion of it. This, that's authorizing the town to spend that money. Later on during the meeting, we went through and explained how we were going to get, where that money was going to come from. Three hundred thousand dollars was coming from ARPA funds for the radio system. Hundred and twenty-five thousand was coming from, um, the fire department for the tanker truck. Another, I want to suggest three hundred thousand dollars was coming out of surplus money or ca, I'm sorry, the old capital fund. And another two hundred and seventy-five was coming out of surplus. That's why the total expenditure was over two million, but the, um, eight hundred thousand and eight hundred and fifty thousand had already been authorized for the expenditure for the, the, um, engine truck.
Neither.
The one point four million was part of that expenditure and the, those numbers that you have were what the cost was that we were asking the town to authorize the expenditure for. Later on in the meeting was explaining where all that money was coming from. And that was clear to the board of selectmen and I know it was clear to the board of finance and I'm, I'm sorry if it was not clear to the public, but I thought it was clear to the public.
It's.
And I hear what you're saying, I hear what you're saying.
Very well could be the lone and only person that thinks that way.
I doubt it, but.
But I think it, it could be confusing walking in and picking up the paper on the, on the, uh, stage up there and setting down and not, maybe not picking up on the accounting end of, during the presentation, how you're getting there.
Yep. I, 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 I hear that and I, I, we will, in the future, we'll try to do a better job explaining, but I, I think that, you know, we had it laid out on the screen as far as I know, powerfully so. I, I hear what you're saying, but we, we definitely, there's no question in my mind that this, this is, this is the process we have to go through.
So, so with that, with that statement you made, Tim, what's, what are you looking for or what are you, what are you thinking?
I'm thinking, I don't want this turned down as well. Thinking this is a lot invested.
Well, it's all right.
I, I didn't know if you're, if you're always thinking that, oh, because it went up four hundred, four hundred and forty thousand, uh, it, it went up forty, forty-four thousand. Is that all that you guys have to pay or are you still saying that you're going to pay the hundred and twenty-five?
No, committed to the one twenty-five.
I remember sitting in there on a Saturday, Saturday afternoon, all of us discussing.
No, that's still committed without a doubt. I just was hoping that we didn't have to go through what we have to go through, potentially not have this go through after all this work. That was my.
That, no, that is, that's a legitimate concern. It's a concern of mine.
There's a lot of time invested and the party has already invested into this with the consultant, so.
Yep. It is a concern, it's a concern of mine as well, but it is part of the process that we have to go through.
Okay.
So.
I think, I think if we go to a town meeting, explain like we did when we needed more money to outfit the new fire truck, explain we authorized four hundred thousand and we didn't have a hard fax number, now we have a hard fax number and we need forty thousand or forty-one thousand, whatever it may be, to do it. I think if we explain.
We all know how much everything's gone up, especially the last six months, so I mean.
So I, I think, you know, in this, this simple explanation I tried to offer a little bit earlier that we put this in front of, we moved quickly, quicker than you guys anticipated. And the, the study, getting to the, getting to the rock number took longer than we anticipated. So here we are, um, we're in the middle of a massive inflation and, and I think we're doing okay with only a ten percent increase, so.
To be a hundred percent transparent, I thought we already ordered it. So again, my ignorance, um.
I got the contract.
I, I really thought we did, Tim. I mean, so again, excuse me for, uh, missing it, um.
There's a lot of, it's, it's hard to explain, but there's a lot of work that just goes into all of these specs and.
Yep. I'm sure there is.
There's some research and making sure that we're doing the best we can for the town.
I think you're going to keep going up, especially free, you know, either fuel or metal side, but free.
So, um, the final number was forty thousand, ninety-four, is that correct?
Yes.
Forty-four thousand. Forty thousand, ninety-four.
Okay, so, um, can we have a motion to move to the, um, board of finance? An additional request to move to the town for an additional forty thousand, ninety-four dollars, um, to send to town meeting to, uh, to fund the, um, the tanker truck, the new tanker truck.
Do we want to throw a couple hundred dollars in there?
That's, that's my question. I, I actually had put another five in my head.
I was going to say make an even forty-five.
Yep.
I don't want to spend it if we don't have to, but at least if, if it's in there and we don't have to go back again.
Yeah, if there's a, yeah.
That's right where I want to be.
Air on the side with caution.
So I'll make a motion to go to the board of finance, looking for another forty-five thousand for the new tanker truck that we approved last.
April.
Last April or May when we get it down here.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Thank you. I need to get to the agenda again. And that's it. How about that? Okay, before we, actually, we don't want to adjourn. We're going to stay in, stay in session. Let's take a temporary adjournment until we need to go back into session with the board of finance. So let's have a motion for that.
Make a motion to suspend the meeting for right now till we reconvene at the board of finance.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right, everybody? Happy New Year. We'll see you next year.
Good evening, everyone. This is the December two thousand twenty-two, uh, meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance. I wish to offer everyone a happy holiday. We can still do that, can't we? We have lots of holidays, so happy holidays. Well, I'll start off with a sad reminder that, uh, in, uh, in September, I have a heavy and sad, or in September, Russ Mark resigned from the board. Uh, and last month, uh, Bill Balsifur resigned from the board. And I wish to say that both of those people are major contributors in this town, major contributors to the board and I'm going to go so far as to say they made my life pleasant and I hope to continue right to that. But, so I started out negative, let us go to a, a positive. It is with joy in my heart. I offer joy and glee in my heart. I offer that we have found replacements, people who have volunteered to share the same momentum. Carol Hannah, who is with us and Mike Weglars, do I have all those contents right, Mike?
Weglars.
Weglars, there you go. And thank you and for your time and, uh, you too shall become a productive member of our team. Now, I, we have several things to do, but Carmella would like a moment.
Personal privilege, quite personal privilege if you will. I, um, wanted to present this to the town, but through Angus. Um, and it's a twofold. It's, uh, in commemoration of our town for our anniversary and it's based off of a photograph, actually, that Bud's wife took of our town hall, which I think is absolutely super. And it's, it's really unique to this town. It's sort of like our icon. So I did a watercolor of it and.
That's great and that's great because we are still celebrating and I hope we celebrate each other for many years. Beautiful.
Wow.
That's. Carmella's watercolor.
That's beautiful. And that's about Kate's picture, bud.
I assumed that it was, but.
It's really special.
That's awesome.
Thanks.
And you know what makes it nice for me is, I probably shouldn't say that, the, the Connecticut flag with the stripe across it looks like a Scottish flag, so. That's beautiful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This will go somewhere in the building.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Very much.
Like I said, that seventy-fifth anniversary was a pretty special little celebration and we'll continue that.
Yeah, it sort of coincides.
The, the second flag looks what kind of flag?
No, the blue with the white stripe, St. Andrews flag.
Oh, all right, there you go. That's a sweet flag. All right, you have to let you go. Uh, the first item on our agenda, returning to our agenda, is the nomination of officers. Every year in, and I'm not certain whether it's November, December, once we, some years we, uh, we elect the members of the board of finance, I guess we are, uh, so we elect officers for the following year. Now, I, I offer the floor to anyone who would like to speak. I am honored if you would like me to be your chairman for another, another year. However, I'm also a generous enough person to, if anyone would like that position, uh, I will be happy to.
Please, please, let me nominate Bud for chair of board of finance upcoming year. I'll second.
Thank you. Although, any discussion? We always think of you, you would think over the years I get this right. Does anyone wish to add any discussion or should we just say yea or nay? So all those in favor of me continuing for the board of finance, chairman?
Aye.
All right. Now, there is, uh, last year, Russ Mark was our vice chair. Russ has resigned. Does anyone have a desire to be vice chair? It is, in my opinion, a ceremonial job. Now, John is staying quiet, but he's actually accepted position because he didn't call me back when I called. When I called to say that he has the honor of being the, uh, probably the elder statesman of our board. And it's my assumption that John was in tears at his family and did not call me back. If that is true, I would like to nominate John as our vice chair. I believe it is ceremonial. I have no intention of not making meetings, so it is, you can just be in parades. All those in favor of.
I second.
I second. All those in favor of John taking this ceremony, this position? Look at the, he almost tears.
It's ceremonial too much.
You can't see this. He has tears in his eyes. He can't speak.
That's right. I'm speechless.
All right, with that behind us and heading into a new year.
Just make them, you all have to vote.
Didn't, I thought we all just voted.
No.
No, okay. All those in favor of John becoming vice chair, just say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, okay. We then have to, we have two minutes from two meetings. Uh, we have last month, November twenty-second, and we held a special December sixth meeting to appoint our new, uh, to elect, nominate our new members. Uh, does anyone, would anyone make a motion? Does anyone wish to discuss the minutes?
I'm moved to approve the minutes of both November twenty-second and December sixth.
Second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Audience of citizens, any citizens wish to, uh, comment? Chair? Hearing none. Eric Tommy, this is you. Director's report.
Congratulations, Bud. And thanks to have Mike and Carol on, on the board. So congratulations to everybody. Hopefully everyone has their report in front of them. I, I think Kathy was supposed to send that out today. I'm not sure if she did.
She did.
She did? Okay, great, thanks. So, well, let's start off with some real good news. Liberty Bank actually, uh, increased their rates, uh, by a lot. And I was, you know, I almost couldn't believe it. I had to ask them twice. I said, you know what, are you sure? That's the rate? So, um, on our business money market account, under the general fund account balances at the top, our, uh, business money market account increased from one percent to one point nine eight percent. Our municipal sweep money market account increased from one percent to two point four seven percent. And our two thousand twenty-two capital improvements borrow, uh, uh, account increased from point nine five to two point four seven percent. So that is definitely good news. Um, of course, uh, that's based on the Fed increasing their, their rates. Uh, I know they went up point five oh percent, fifty basis points, and before that they had gone up like seventy-five basis points. Uh, so of course, when the, uh, rates increase, it's, it's great for, uh, deposit accounts, not so good for mortgage accounts. But, uh, so anyway, I, let's, let's take it while we can. The general fund balances at nine fifty-three, nine forty-one. It's a little higher than we normally, uh, would, you know, keep it. Uh, having said that, uh, the regional school payment is due on, on January first and that amount is five hundred ninety-six thousand, one seventy-seven. So, um, uh, we're keeping, we're keeping that money, uh, in the account to, to cover that. Plus, we're starting to get, um, uh, tax revenues that are coming in. I spoke to Kate today, our tax, uh, tax collector. In December, we've received a million fourteen thousand, six forty-seven in tax revenues. Uh, that does include the tax sales, I think it was like three, three properties, I think she said.
It was, uh, three properties.
Right, so that does, uh, on the, uh, delinquent taxes that were caught up. So, um, that does include, uh, the money that came in from those three properties. If you look at the, um, see at the general fund account balances, uh, we're at seven million, ninety-two thousand, nine fifty-eight. Um, I always take away that capital improvements borrow because that's actually, uh, proceeds from, from a loan that we had taken out. So I, I just, I subtract that amount from the, um, actual, uh, seven million, uh, ninety-two, nine fifty-eight and come up with a more, um, uh, practical number for us to use. Um, so we're at, uh, five million, eight forty-one, eight seventy-six. Um, last month, uh, we did the same thing. We're at six million, five oh nine, four twenty-six. So we're, um, we're, uh, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five forty-nine less than last month. However, if you take it from a year ago, twelve twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one, we're up a million, two eleven, one ninety-eight. And just, just regarding the capital improvements borrow, again, it's, it, the loan proceeds, we have a holding account until the dispers, uh, disbursements are made on that account. Uh, we had borrowed a million, four twenty-five on six eight, two thousand twenty-two from Dime Bank. It was at two point four seven percent. Uh, well, I'm sorry, that's, that's what we're receiving on the money, money market account. But we've, um, there's only been one disbursement that's made on, on that, uh, on those monies. That was for a hundred and fifty thousand, which was a progress payment made on the, um, pumper contract for fire truck. Uh, that was made on eight, eight, eight eighteen, two thousand twenty-two. And we've gotten a little over a thousand dollars in interest, uh, that's accrued on, on, on that account since it was opened. Um, I, I made two wire transfers, uh, this past month from eleven twenty-one to twelve twenty-seven. Uh, one was made on November twenty-ninth for five hundred thousand. The other one was made on twelve five for six hundred thousand. So the two transfers, uh, totaled one million, one hundred thousand. So that went from the Liberty Bank money market account to our Citizens Bank, uh, general, general fund account to, uh, to take care of accounts, accounts payables. I asked Kathy today, um, there's an account, the, the account here that we have a town grant account. It's always had like three hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. And I noticed today, uh, that we had, uh, eight thousand, four sixty-six. So there was a deposit made of eight thousand, one forty-one, fifty-two. I asked her what that was and she says that's the opioids settlement.
Mm-hmm.
And also some monies that were received from the little nip where we get like five percent, five percent return on that. So, um, that's actually monies that are going to be, uh, put into that, that account from now on.
Those monies, uh, at least the opioids will be going directly into our account Those monies, at least the opioids, will be going directly into our account and then directly transferred over to the TriCon Youth Services.
If you look at the total balance figure on the bottom, which is $9,443,521. Again, I take away the capital improvements borrow, I take away our ARP funds, and come up with a figure of, actually, if you take those two together, that's $2,566,774 that we subtract from that amount. So we end up with $6,876,747. That's a more realistic figure. And if we compare that to last month, we're up, we're actually down $504,74. If you compare it to last year, we're up $1,450,679. The ARP funds, the American Rescue Plan Act, and you'll see there, you know, there's ARP funds where we have $1,315,692 in that account. We received those monies actually in three installments. One was on July 14th, 2021 for $657,454. And then we received, on 8/16, we received $225,953. And then on October 4th, $431,500. So those last two installments equal the one that we received last year for the $657,454. So it totals, between those three installments, it totals $1,314,908. We have received $783.92 in interest. So that's where we're coming up with a $1,315,692 in that account. We did get $98.67 in interest last month. Our ECS monies, the Education Equalization Grant monies, for this fiscal year, we're receiving $1,671,457. We did receive our first payment. It actually comes in three installments. So one comes at the end of October, which we received, $417,864. We'll get another one at the end of January for the same amount. And then we'll receive in April, April 30th, half of that amount. So that'll be $835,729. Just quickly on upcoming debt service. We do have the regional school, which we will be paying on the 15th of this month, interest and principal of $268,097. In July, we paid an interest amount of $10,311. So the regional school total is $278,408. But again, we'll be paying the $268,097 on the 15th of this month. Our capital improvements borrow with Dine Bank. Again, that was $1,425. That loan opened 6/8 of 2022. It was a 15-year term, 3.25% fixed rate, annual principal amount of $95,000. We pay interest twice a year on that. And the first interest and principal payment was made on August 15th for $103,104.69. That was the principal of $95,000 plus the interest of $8,104. And the next payment that's due on that, it's just an interest payment. It's due on February 15th for $21,612.50. So our principal balance is $1,330 on that now. And the USDA, the Department of Agriculture, that's our for Kirtland River Street Sewer Project. That was originally $2,910,000 at 2.625% interest. That was for 40 years. It ran for 2016. It runs from 2016 to 2055. There's an annual principal and interest payment of $118,379. And that was actually paid on December 17th, just a couple of weeks ago. So that was the seventh payment that we made on that account. So right now the balance is $2,649.26. And we've reduced the principal by $269,073. So that's it as far as right now, the debt service. That's pretty much it.
I'd say every month, I just said Tommy's retirement day 55. When that bond comes due, Tommy will retire. Tommy, remind me, you call it the regional school borrow.
Yeah, actually, that was given to me today. I saw that from Kathy. It says it's a debt service that's owed for, this is our portion for the town of Deep River. And it was, she's a subtotal debt service of $278,408. And as I said, it's January 15th is where we pay interest, principal and interest of $268,097. And back on July 15th, there was just an interest payment of $10,311. So that's, I think that's it.
School borrowed and we have to reimburse them for, I thought they borrowed in their own name. It would be in the budget, aye?
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. I'm not sure exactly why she sent that to you.
That's why when you introduced it that way, I was taken aback.
Yeah, but I'll look into it and report that to you guys. That's an odd report we've never, I've never seen.
Well, yeah, that's actually the first time that I've seen it myself.
I'll get an explanation for that.
Okay.
Tom, can I ask, is there any reason that we keep money at Essex Savings when they're only paying 0.1%?
Well, okay, that, yeah, they actually went up. Well, I think the reason we have it, you know, we don't really, we don't really expect that monies to be there that long. I think that's the reason for that. I didn't want to put all the eggs in one basket. So that's kind of why, I mean, certainly I can close that account out and open up another one, but I don't think.
I, Tom and I discussed where we put that money as it came in. And Citizens said left. Liberty, while they're still here, has all the rest of our money. And we wanted to keep something as local as we could. And we thought that we should put it somewhere besides Liberty to do that. Essex was the choice. And to Tom's point, I don't expect we're going to have that money at the end of this year. Or 2023. You know, certainly the vast majority of it will be gone. So the interest really is not a big concern for us.
Any more questions for Tom?
I just had a question related to the tax collection. I don't think any answer was, Tom. It's really more percentage of revenue, like where are we with what's owed to the town versus what's been collected?
That's interesting. We'll talk about that later.
We will deal with that exactly in the budget and put you in a proper.
I think when I spoke to, when I spoke to Kate today, she said that we had probably collected a little over $10 million this year. I don't know if that's.
I mean, we'll see at the moment. It's amazingly good.
It is confusing though, I don't doubt it. It's an odd.
All right, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Recommendation of selection and actions on recommendations, speaking of actions or recommendations. Where are you on ARP? Every month you promised you'd come bring to us a English.
We talked about that at the Selectment meeting. I don't, I promise or threaten. We've got a large number of requests that have been made. The Board of Selectmen have reviewed them individually. I think at this point, we're probably going to schedule a couple of special meetings so that folks have an opportunity to come in and defend their request if they want to. And there are so many requests that I think that would be an incredibly long to do that all at once. So, but I hope that we have made, we are ready to make recommendations to you in January or February at the latest so that we can move it to the Town and Market.
They come into defense that with the Selectment meeting, the joint meeting, Board of Finance?
Probably twice. We could do it to both at the same time. But I think the process is, it's the same way we do our budgets, right? We should, we're supposed to do the Board of Selectment recommendations to the Board of Finance. It might be practical and we can have that conversation if we do all these special meetings at the same time. So then we can move them forward.
When do those monies actually have to be dispersed? Is there a timetable? There is a timetable.
There is a timetable. Well, I think there's another three years to go.
Oh, another, okay.
About four years. All right. Angus.
Okay. I'm going to put my shin guards on. Joyce is ready to kick me if I go too long. But we did have a busy Board of Selectmen's meeting and we have a lot to talk about with you. Let's go in order that we went through them. We've gone through the process with the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen of talking about the steep grant that we just awarded for our playgrounds. During that process, we don't have any record of us recommending to a town meeting. And that's what we have to do tonight, or we're asking you to do. To just to bring, you know what I forgot to do too? I'm sorry, I'm going to back up a second. I want to welcome Carol and Mike to the board. We're glad to have you guys and appreciate your volunteer and your time and your efforts. I can't think of two more suited people to be on this board, so welcome and thank you. The old board, we went through this, Steve, and we talked about it. So to bring you up to speed and to bring everyone up to speed. We applied for and were awarded a $400,000 grant to purchase equipment, to replace existing equipment in their three public parks. The elementary school, Debit Field, and Flatwood Park. That was extremely fortuitous because we were in the process with the elementary school of going through and beginning to get bids for replacing that equipment. It has aged out. It's certainly not unsafe, but it is getting close to where we need to replace it. That was going to be $200,000 on its own. And rather than try to put that in our budget, we applied for this grant and we're fortunate enough to be awarded that. Along with that $400,000, we need to contribute towards that. It's about a $500,000 expenditure. So 20% of that $500,000, we're asking for you to recommend to the town that we provide $100,000 towards this project. We had all talked about it. We think, my recollection is, I don't want to speak for anybody, but we thought that was a pretty good bargain. And we'd like to move that to the next town meeting that we can schedule so that we can formalize what we need to do with the state. So that's the first. If you would like to act or ask any questions?
Board of Finance, any questions or thoughts?
So the dollar amount that actually went out to bid and that was?
When, it hasn't gone to bid yet, but we've got numbers from a couple of companies that provide these. It was about a $500,000 expenditure for all three parks. We were able to get $400,000 from the state, so.
The additional.
The additional 100 has to come from us.
And that would be handicap accessible?
Oh, yeah, yep, yep, all of that, all of that.
So it wouldn't mean any additional monies if we were to approve that tonight?
No, no, that will be a $500,000 expenditure. We'll be limited to that 500. We'll go to bid. We haven't purchased or ordered any equipment. We simply have looked at what we expect things to cost. And whatever we decide, which is going to be that 500, we will ensure that we stay below that.
Who's the lead time on playground equipment?
Well, we're getting close. Before this year, we could have ordered it in January and have it ready for the summer. I don't know where it's going to be this year. The hope still is that we can get this ordered and delivered. We're going to, we're going to have to store it if it comes before the summer. We can't work on it during the summer. We could probably work at Flatwood and Debit, but we want to make sure the ground is thawed and all that kind of thing. So it'll be spring before we start work, if we can get the equipment.
So anything that doesn't fall under the $500,000 is going to be purchased? It's only going to cost $500,000?
Right, right. No, we're only going to order equipment that costs $500,000, yes.
And the grant requires us to put up 20%. So if we, if the town turns it down, we get no money.
That's right.
So do you want a recommendation from the board now or?
Yes, we need.
We need to approve it so they can send it to us.
Are we going to do that later or are we doing it as they come along?
My suggestion is take them one at a time and we'll act on it.
Yeah, that's what I would, that'd be a lot easier.
Then I make a recommendation that the board authorize a, an amount of, what was it, 20% of the?
$100,000.
Of $100,000 to supplement the $400,000 grant from the state to purchase equipment for the playgrounds, the elementary school in Debit and Flatwood Park.
Second?
Any discussion?
No brainer.
Yeah.
Everyone agreed to that. All those in favor of sending to the town with a recommendation, Board of Finance, they approve $100,000? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Angus, to you.
I have another for you. That is the resolution. I don't know, did you all speak about this at your last meeting? The resolution establishing a capital nonrecurring expenditures fund. Do you still have copies of that resolution or would you like to have them?
Please hand them out.
I'm not sure how much, how deep you got into it in your last conversation. Again, just as a quick summary. Our auditors or accountants, I kind of interchange those terms when I talk about our auditors, Maloney and Sable, have strongly recommended that the town adopt what is known as a capital nonrecurring expenditures fund. This will come in very, very briefly, what this is best for. And Bud, please correct me if I misstate anything. But when we make a major capital, decision to make a major capital expenditure, right now, it just sits in our funds. And at the end of the year, if we haven't been able to complete that expenditure, you need to go back to the town to author, reauthorize that expenditure. That gets very complicated in the accounting part of it. Also, as far as I'm concerned, it's very confusing, not only for us, but more so for the public to, wait, we already did this kind of thing. What this establishes is a fund where those capital monies can be settled. And once they're, once they're approved by the town and by the Board of Finance and the town, we don't have to go back. We can, they stay in that fund until they're expended. So a good example of this is the things that we got approved in the big expenditures that we went through last year. Some of those will be spent before the end of this fiscal year, some of those will not. So we, rather than have to go back to the town, this fund is a place to put that money and it sits there. Now, that's a very simple explanation, but I don't know if you need to add anything to that.
Play with a few of your words here. We should go back to the town. We have not been going back to the town, asking to extend authorization. That's one of the things the auditors are concerned about. We have been spending on projects that we did not have a renewed approval for.
You're right, but we did talk with the auditors and they said, well, just carry it over. You had already.
And that's one of the reasons why Angus is saying, and I'm saying, they're recommending. Hadn't this, they would have to put us on some sort of notice.
Yeah.
We're spending money we do not have authority to spend, so, yes.
The Board of Selectmen, when we talked about it, we went through the first four items on this, one of which is of note and we actually are going to come back into session so we can have this discussion. In fact, why don't we, why don't we do that now so that we can all participate?
We'll make a motion to come back in session and talk about the capital nonrecurring expenditure fund.
I second that.
So here we go. The first item really just talks about the definition of what this is. The second item says what we can do with the monies in this fund. What I like about it is the second line, the specific capital improvement or the acquisition of any specific item of equipment. This is not designed, I don't think, at least not in my mind, for us to just start putting monies into this fund. These need to be items that are approved by you, by the Board of Selectmen and by the town. The third is where we get into where I think we need to have a little bit more of a conversation. Only in one of the items in these. Item A, the amount, this basically talks about where the money is going to come from that goes into this fund. Item A is the amounts raised from the issuance of debt. So if we borrow. Item B, amounts received from other sources, public or private, restricted for capital or nonrecurring expenditures. That would be something like the ARPO funds. Would be some monies that come, that are not coming from our town budget. Item C, amounts authorized to be transferred thereto from the general fund cash surplus. For this big expenditure, we took some of our monies that we're going to use to fund some of these expenditures from our capital expenditures. So this is, these are examples of things that we already are doing. Item D is something that we haven't done and this is where we need to talk. And I'm going to read this word for word. The amounts raised by the annual levy of a tax not exceeding four mils for the benefit of such fund. And I'd like to pause there so we can talk about that. That four mils adds up to probably $2.2 million. That's a lot of money for us to add to our tax burden for a capital expenditure. And the Board of Selectmen is not quite comfortable with it. I'm not certain how comfortable you all are with it. We didn't come up with a recommendation, but we talked briefly about maybe two mils as opposed to four. But I think that's time for us to have a conversation about that.
Remember, this is an authorization gives us the flex, that would give us the flexibility to do it. It doesn't require us to do it. It says, and this is, most of these words come out of the state statutes. Gives you authority to tax citizens, put it into this account. And it's, at least the reading Angus and I have, and with some direction from the auditors, this gives you the ability, and we've had this discussion from time to time, asking citizens to pay to put it into this account in anticipation of future capital requirement. It's like each one of us set money aside to buy a house, buy a car. It's sort of of that nature. So it doesn't require you. So it doesn't require you, but it would limit how much you could on any one year due. So initially I was against it, but it is a flexibility that may not hurt us. Four is, the dollar amount that Angus just calculated for you is a strikingly large number. I doubt whether we would ever use it, but there will be people after us who could. But anyways, I don't know. Anyone have any thoughts on whether you wish to see this clause? Is that the right phrase, clause condition in the resolution? Do you like this authority? Think it's too rich? And we can, the Board of Finance at the recommendation of Selectmen, can accept this and put this in place. We do not have to get a town authority to do this.
This resolution?
Yes.
Done, no, we need to go to the town.
I thought myself told you on Thursday that the Board of Finance could do this then.
No. That was a different part of the conversation. This needs to go to the town meeting to be adopted. That was my, that's my understanding.
Okay.
So are you asking us if we want to include that item D or exclude item D?
That would be a question. Or something in the middle, do you wish to go smaller?
Just change that four mil to two mil.
It's a whole lot of money.
Yeah. It's a crazy amount of money, I think.
And what kind of authority does it give someone who wants to include that?
Gives you the authority of the Board of Finance.
What?
Gives you the Board of Finance.
All right, so what does it give the Board of Finance? The ability to approve that we are going to approve, like what kinds of?
Or I ask citizens to pay dollars to go into this capital account.
But you still have to approve the capital item. So.
I don't think this does you do.
No, but I mean, in order to increase the two, or to add two mils.
Two point two mils.
You would have to have a capital item based on the first, or the second.
I understand, you think somebody using a fire truck, using this clause, you could begin to ask people to approve it.
Yeah, that's an example that I would go to. If we had, if we had, you could structure it any way you like. If we had an emergency that we needed to fund $2 million to repair something at the school, based on this, we could move to the town. That we're going to raise the mils. The mil rate is going to go up four mils specifically for that $2 million for that school repair.
But that capital expense would have to be approved by the town at the town meeting.
That's right.
So they could always.
They can turn it down.
In which case then you probably would not increase the two mil because you'd be putting money into this fund that's not funding anything. Because the town has turned down the expenditure.
If the town turns down the expenditure, then you'd come back and say, okay, how about two mil? Because we're going to have to borrow the rest. Somehow or another, we've got to fund this. This is one way that we can fund any of these expenditures. All of which needs to go to the town for approval. It just, this gives us, gives us, gives you the ability to, it's another way for you to fund nonrecurring capital expenditures.
But there is a check to balance, so it makes it more palatable for the town to approve this, I guess.
Adopting this resolution doesn't put any money anywhere. It simply creates a fund for us to put money there. This is where Bud, I think, this is where I understood. We don't need to go back to the town to move money into this fund if it's already been approved. We can take all the money that we approved last April and move that into this fund.
That's correct.
Yeah. And then that's this fund. But this fund, this vote doesn't do that. This fund only, this vote only creates the fund. And then we can fill it however, any of these ways.
Do we know if any of this surrounding municipalities similar size have this one? So this is a?
This is a common thing, yeah.
This was a recommendation by the? This is the practice, because most towns are running the same, we have that. It looks like you're creating this.
So this would have to be a separate capital nonrecurring fund setup. We do have one now with that small balance.
This is, yes, this is, that'll go away. That was not authorized by the town.
Okay.
And adopted as a resolution. That was simply something that we created many years ago, probably.
Oh, yeah.
Probably our friend Greg Alexander.
He's the father of that account.
Yep. It's a good credit where credit is due.
Yes.
This takes it, the correct or the proper next step is create this fund so that we can, for longer term projects, we can have the funds available for an extended period if we need to.
So we wouldn't arbitrarily be creating a fund and tack on 2.2 mils to the mil rate?
No.
We would only do it when there's something that needs to be funded because the town's approved the funding. By towns approve the purchase or the bill, the buy or the whatever.
I would suggest that this group would not move to how we're going to, we would look into how we're going to fund it prior to bringing to the town that we want to do it. Okay, so we would look at, for example, we need a firehouse. That would go into this capital expenditure. Let's say that's a $4 million expenditure. We're going to fund that. I would come to you and I would suggest this is how we're going to fund this. We're going to go to the USDA for $2 million. We've got, we're able to get a grant for another million. And we're going to need to have to do something with our mil rate or go into our circles for the other million. However, this is making things up right now, just for the conversation. That would be part of, part and parcel of the same process. We wouldn't first say, okay, let's go to the town and get approval for the firehouse without knowing how we're going to fund it and asking the town to approve that at the same time. I frankly don't think we can ask them to approve a firehouse without telling them how we're going to fund it. I wouldn't vote to approve it if I didn't know how it was going to be. This does not put any money anywhere. This only establishes a place to put the money. And this question that is in front of us right now is just one way to put money into the fund. I think, and I think I speak for the Board of Selectmen, I think, we think four mils gives too much latitude to any board to just come up with, okay, that's how we're going to do it. I think, I think two mils is more reasonable, it's a million bucks. It's something that we, nobody, I don't think anybody around this table would want to do, but it leaves us the possibility, to Bud's point. People down the road might need to do this. And it gives them the potential to do so. To Bud's point, we don't need to put this in here. We can strike it altogether. We can modify it or we can leave it as it sits.
If we've got to take this to the town, that's a big, that could scare.
It could.
Scare the normal citizens.
But we always, we have to continually remind everybody, it might scare you, but you can come out and vote against it.
They will vote at the town meeting whether we put it in.
That's right. It will, it will always be voted on by the town. It's not, it's not something that I can do. It's not something that the Board of Selectmen can do. It's not something that you can do. We have to go to the town for it. It doesn't change any of our process. It simply formalizes where we put the money.
Every year, for the last couple of years, we have put into our budget, into capital, dollars for the next year or so. I see this as giving us the flexibility to do that in a big way. So if we know that there's a fire department, a firehouse coming in a few years, we can begin to ask the town to give us, if a fire truck is coming in, we can ask the town. And this would limit how much we can ask to put into this account, is what I'm thinking.
That's right. That's right. That's a good, that's a good explanation. I'm not sure that that's something that this group wants to do. They have to set up a Christmas club or not. But that is, it is something that we can continue to talk about.
We've certainly had conversations that we know fire trucks will be needed in the future. Amplities will be in the future. And if we know that, what's his S X called, sinking funds? We can begin to, begin to ask people to put these dollars aside. It's a flexibility that we have talked about for years. Be nice to have. And this gives us the ability to do it in some fashion.
Yep.
To me, it's a lot.
What I think is important.
It's a big Christmas club.
What I came out of the Board of Selectmen's meeting with though, and you guys jump in if I'm mistaken, we don't believe that we should put any money into this that does not have an approved purpose. So if we want to create a sinking fund for a fire truck, then we should create that. We should say this money every year will go towards a fire truck in the future. Not just put, let's put this in here so we can have this money for any purchase later on. Any purchase in here should have a designated purpose.
That was one of my problems. I want to make sure that all the money was earmarked. And if it's not, it's earmarked where it's going to go for the right places. Because sometimes the money may end up somewhere else. And I just, I'm all for it, but I just want to make sure that it's earmarked. If it's for a sinking fund for a fire truck or snowplow truck, whatever it may be, then we earmark it for that. Those are my concerns.
So you can't put it in there for a maybe, it has to be in there for a positive?
I think so.
And it's similar to Bud's point, similar to what we do already. We've done that for way before my time for playground equipment. We have done it in the past few years for the revale to try to take someone's bite out of a $100,000 expenditure. In one single year, we put $25,000 a year away for four years and then we've got it paid for. This just gives us a place to put it. So we don't have to remember it. Because right now, we don't have a place there.
The other towns that have this, what are they using this money for?
Exactly the same thing, capital nonrecurring funds. That's what it's for.
If they have a sinking fund, they call them sinking funds, it's for a fire truck or a large purchase. But they're funding it as a sinking fund. Now, that's not the way, I respect you, but that's not the way we've done it today. Today's way to put money into, those who came before us simply put money into an account knowing that there would be capital in the future.
Yep.
And this says it would be for the annual levy of the tax. Does that mean every year?
Well, we.
Well, it doesn't mean it has to be every, it'd be any year that you decided to do it.
Right, we levy a tax every year. We determine what the mil rate is going to be. In this, if we decided we wanted to fund this fund for something special, we could.
Add that mil.
Add that mil rate.
To whatever the established mil rate is.
Yep.
Yes.
Again, at a town meeting. You guys sit the mil rate.
Right.
At the town meeting, sets the, approves the expenditures.
So it wouldn't go out as a separate tax bill, it would just be added for that purpose, right? And then you'd have to know if it's nonrecurring and you satisfied it, you'd have to take it off.
Thoughts, do I get uncomfortable with it? Too high?
I can hear Bill paying.
And I agree, that's what, Angus and I, for a while, were thinking about taking it out. But it seems like it's worthy of a discussion. Four is eye catching, especially when you do the math. Math is very eye catching. Doesn't mean we ever use it.
Right.
But it's just eye catching.
A mil's 550 right now.
Right now.
That's about right, yeah.
So it'd be a million one if you did two.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. Which is still a big number.
Still a big number.
Yeah.
But it's an appropriate number only in the sense that there's very little that we're purchasing that isn't going to be close to that.
Well, a fire truck's $800,000.
Right.
Today's fire truck is $800,000. It's interesting, it's sort of interesting, if, as she's fire truck. It would suggest that we would buy a fire truck in a year. Doesn't that sound odd for me to do? But it is, we can make up stories pro and con, but do you like the flexibility of having it? I sort of like the, I sort of like the idea of having it, even though we never use it. And I suggest we bring it to two, because it's smaller than four.
Yeah. That's where, I think that's where we're at.
So if you ended up needing that additional two in the future, or future generations that have to address this, would we have to bring this back to the town for approval to go to two, to four from two?
Oh, if they, if they needed to go four, yes, it absolutely would. Any revision to this would have to go back to the town.
Same process. So just thinking into the future is four, just when you look at the cost of things. Yesterday, this fire truck was $800,000, right?
Yeah.
So you think into the future, are we just kind of buying ourselves some time by going to two? Or you think it'll sell to the town better versus?
I think that, I think it's a number, if it's a number that we're comfortable with, then we have a better opportunity to communicate to the town that this is something that we've thought about, we've talked about, and we think this is a comfortable number. If in the future we need to raise it, then we can raise it. If in the future we need to expunge it, we can expunge it. But it is, in my opinion, it is, it could in fact be a valuable tool if needed.
Under point two, are there any intended uses of the fund outside of the financing of all or part of the planning, construction, reconstruction, acquisition, capital improvement, or the acquisition of any specific item of capital equipment? Is there anything outside of that that would be used?
I can't think of any. I think, you know.
Because then you might want to change May to Shal. Because it would make it specific for that purpose. Because May is conditional.
Yep.
Means you could do something else with the money.
That's fine with me. I had not thought that, but that's certainly fine.
It's conditional, it just means that you could do something else potentially with the money. That's the reason I asked that.
Well, planning is the first stage.
Planning's there, construction, reconstruction.
Reconstruction or acquisition, that's, those are the four parts of the process.
Pretty much covers it, right?
Yeah. I'm fine with that. If that's, if you guys are, then we can make that sound.
Might want to take, yeah.
Take the May out and put in a Shal.
Because then you'd have to do, you'd be going outside of this then if you decided to do something else with the money. Whereas with the May there, you could argue that. You could do something else with the money.
Yep, that's perfectly fine, that's a big.
It's restricted to capital items, but.
Then if you look at four, it's also, number two allows you to spend it on costs associated with property tax revaluation.
Which is what?
Well, that's what we're doing already.
Our properties, we give every year we define, and it will be specifically used for that.
But, yeah.
Which creates an asset that's somewhat capitalized. Can I reach your building, here, right back?
No, but it says that the fund can be used for costs associated with a property tax revaluation. That's not capital.
I'm suggesting it is.
It is.
You think so?
If you're creating, you're creating a value for a town which will live for a period of time which will be the basis of what you charge your taxes. And we are actually doing that now. We are actually asking people to give us tax dollars now. Put into, it should be a capital account so that we pull out under $25,000, $250,000 every year and create an asset of value to tax us.
That's there because of what we are doing now. Because we are already setting aside money for the revale. That's why that, that number.
But I don't see how that's capital.
Yeah.
Creating a list of all the assets in your town.
Because you're paying somebody to do something, that's not capital.
No, no, the list would be the capital expenditure.
Well, that's not how I'm reading it. I'm not the lawyer, but it's just not how I'm reading it.
For instance, one of the things.
Which I guess takes me back to the Shal versus May. Is it's given you a lot of other things you can spend this capital money on that isn't actually something that's tangible that you can hold.
Interesting concept, yes. One of the things that will go in here most likely is our salary survey, which I perceive to be an asset. It's a tool that you will use that will have a life longer than one year, that can simple then.
Well, um, what I would like to do is, as we proceed through, um, I'd like to have a con, you know, finish the conversation about item D before we move further, further down.
Anyone have, wish to make a resolution? In, out? One, two, three, four?
Board of Selectmen is, um, is comfortable with leaving item D of number three in the, the resolution, but, uh, changing the four mills to two mills. But I'm not quite ready to make a recommendation, I'd like to hear if that's something that you guys would be, going to go back and forth.
I'm timed it up.
Okay. All right. Now, um, since we've completed.
What happens if we don't do anything with this until next month? Is there any time limit that this has to be done by?
Yes, we have pushed this off, if you remember, I've been talking about this for July. The accountant's got to close their books. This is holding up the closing of the books.
Yeah.
What would you do next month? Think for a month?
Yeah.
Okay. Thinking is good.
So, um, just to continue that while we think, um, item E is the surplus cash funds already held in reserve, um, we, we've certainly done that as well. And item F, surplus cash funds realized from the sale or leasing of capital assets. If we had any, you know, if any of our fire trucks were, were valuable enough and we, we were able to sell them for any money, that money could go directly into this fund if, if, if needed. Um, then moving on to item four, fund, uh, you know, as we go right down the list of, uh, the funds, May, and that's where you may want to change, uh, change that May to Shell, but, uh, may be used for capital non-recurring expenditures, but restricted to paying for all or part of the planning, bidding, contracts, construction, reconstruction, acquisition of any specific capital improvement, or the acquisition of any specific item of equipment. Number two, costs associated with a property tax revaluation. Item three, costs associated with a preparation amendment or adoption of a plan of conservation and development. That's, that's actually happening right now. Again, maybe you would not consider that a capital expend, a capital item, but it is a tool that the town is required to utilize for.
Correct. Actually, that's an interesting, we have an expense, you could have to transfer, continue up, yes, continue for a couple of years.
Yeah, we've got at least another year of, we, I think we budgeted thirty-five this year and we have forty-five for the next year.
So if it's budgeted as an expense, not a capital, and I guess that's my concern with it.
It's my opinion that that could be considered a capital expense.
It's the first time I've thought about it, it does seem like something will go to the down.
Each one, it's non-recurring, we do, each one is independent of any claim pre-year. Oh, maybe it's not non-recurring, actually, because it is, is revised, it's, it's done every ten years.
And go with the down?
Yeah, actually, two, you may want to leave the May.
I think we need to.
And two?
And that's, that's the point, I'm kidding, that's your point, right? And I think that's, that's correct.
Yeah, you can dis, we can discontinue the fund too, so.
Yeah.
Under two, yeah, you may want to just leave.
Yep, let's leave that as it is.
Yeah.
Um, and it just talks about after the approval of any such expenditure and appropriations to be set up, designated for the project, the acquisition of revale or the plan of conservation and development for which has been authorized, um, and any unex, and such unexpended appropriation may be continued until such project acquisition is completed. And that's, that's really the, the crux of it for me. Any unexpended portion of such appropriation remaining after such completion shall revert to said capital non-recurring expenditures fund. Um, and so I think, Bud, if you want to speak to that a little bit, that, that means that if we set aside four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for something, we only spent five, four hundred, that fifty can go back into this fund or can be moved back.
Right.
Into the general fund. Number five, if any appropriation is duly authorized in accordance with the provision for which the appropriation has been designated is impossible to attain upon recommendation of board of finance and approval by town meeting, such appropriation shall terminate and no longer be in effect. Um, that, you know, that doesn't, doesn't eliminate the fund, it just eliminates that any appropriation of any monies for that. The capital non-recurring expenditures fund may be discontinued upon approval of the board of finance and said funds shall be converted into or added to a sinking fund to provide for the retirement of its non-serial bonded indebtedness. The bond, if the town has no bonded indebtedness, such fund should be transferred to the general fund of the town. So if, in the end, the capital non-recurring expenditures fund, um, is not working, the board of finance can simply say, we're done with it.
Or if there's new legislation providing new flexibility, we could convert one into the other.
That's right.
It's the way I read it, too.
Yep.
Gives you a way of getting out of one to get into another.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So that's where we are, I think with that one change, um, we're ready to, to send it to you guys and to, to be sent to the town.
Board of Finance, any thoughts? Okay.
Okay. Can we get a motion to adopt and send this resolution to the, uh, board of finance?
With what, four mills?
With two mills.
Two mills.
I'll make a motion for the resolution establishing a capital fund and non-recurring expenditure fund to move to a town meeting with the change of two mills.
In item three D.
Item three D.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you going to, are you going to wait?
Let's go, we're going to wait until.
Board of Finance, have I wished to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the board of selectmen to move this to a town meeting?
I make a motion, we accept the resolution and send it to a town meeting with, um, the one change of two mills in item three D from four mills.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, um.
This would have been a long line.
I'm, um, before we start this next one, I want to apologize to our fire chief, I, when I started this, I should have put you first, and I'm sorry. I am sorry about that, Tim. Uh, okay, uh, Tim is, our fire chief is here, Tim Lee, uh, to help with this explanation or any, any questions that you all might have about it, and probably to add to some of the conversation. But, um, the tanker truck that we approved and, and got approved at town meeting last April, um, the committee has been working diligently to, uh, to come up with the cost and get an estimate for that. They put their specs together, they did all of the work that, that goes into, into finding a, a manufacturer for our truck. When they received, they went to six different dealers, uh, from those six, they received three bids. You can see those three bids on the sheet of paper. Um, the one change is the on-scene Spencer Truck Manufacturing bid of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars has been revised to four thousand, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars. That is the low bid, and it is also the bid that meets all of the specifications required by the committee. Um, and that is the recommended, uh, for company to go with. Um, consultants, uh, that the fire department uses to assist them in the purchases of trucks also recommended that there is a additional expenditures of a radio system of twenty-five hundred dollars. That, just for clarification, we know that we spent three hundred thousand, we're buying new radios. That is not new radios for this truck. This truck is probably a year or two out once we order it, when it's on the contract. That is for moving the existing ra, the new radios that we're getting into the newer truck. It's not a purchase of additional radio system. Um, then there are miscellaneous tools and tool mounting, we found that out with the tanker truck when that increased the cost of that. So, um, the fire department took the, took the, um, took the, uh, the recommendation and, and the idea that not, of being very clear and very, um, open about there are additional expenses besides just the truck. Um, that's additional ten thousand, and miscellaneous, miscellaneous items is kind of one of those things that we, you never really know what you're going to need until you, until you need it, um, and it's just, we'd hate to get into that and find out we were five thousand dollars short on, on this, or, or any money short. So that was an additional recommendation. The total, uh, expense of this comes to, well, four hundred and forty thou, no, five hundred, you've got the number?
Four hundred and forty thousand, eighty-four dollars.
Right, four, four thousand, four hundred and forty thousand, ninety-four dollars.
Ninety-four.
That's an additional expense from what we got approved. We had approved at the town four hundred thousand dollars. We need to go back to the town for this additional cost. Um, we need to do that as quickly as we can because the proposal is only good for a certain amount of time. Um, the board of selectmen is recommending a, an additional cost, a request to the town for forty-five thousand dollars to make sure that we don't have any over expenditures. We don't spend it, it goes back into the, back into the general fund, but that's the recommendation of board of selectmen, is to go, to request from the town another forty-five thousand dollars to fund the truck.
Are you being too stingy in today's inflationary world? Should we ask the town for four fifty?
Uh, actually, I think that this is, um, this, this is actually an additional nine thousand dollars for miscellaneous costs that we don't know about, so, um, I think it's, 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 it's a conservative number, but it's not restrictive.
Okay.
And Tim, I would defer to you on that one.
Oh, I don't know, you know, I did.
Yeah, there's no way to know.
There's no way to know.
I, I think nine thousand, we have to, we have to expect it, that's got to be enough.
And just to clarify, the reduction in cost came from having to make an adjustment in the chassis manufacturer, from they spec the international chassis, and international's now not making that chassis, and they couldn't even give us a build date as to when they would even be building that chassis. So they switched gears and they're going with a Freightliner chassis, um, which actually gave the savings of twenty-two hundred and some sixty dollars, I think, or something like that, from the original breakdown that you see there.
Um, that's my, some quick summary, if there are any questions or additional thoughts. When I, when we introduced this to the board of selectmen, I, um, I, there was a little bit of confusion, um, some of us actually thought the truck had already been ordered. But, but the important thing to remember is that, um, we brought this quickly to the fire department, they, quicker than ever before. They, they had to do a lot of work, a lot of work to get us to here, and they've really been working hard since April to get this, to get this. And that, and if you think about it, over that time period from April till now, the cost of everything has gone up, and I think a, a ten percent increase is not that much really, if you think about all of the cost of everything that's going on right now.
How long are they holding this cost for?
I don't remember the contract, I think it's good for ninety days, maybe sixty days.
I don't remember.
But is that time you get to the town meeting?
Yes, we have time for that, yeah.
Board of Finance, questions?
Does this final cost include the monies that was going to come from the fire department to Tim?
The fire department still is on board with the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar contribution.
So it would be in addition to whatever that we are, we would be giving?
Yes.
It wouldn't be included in that so that what the town would appropriate would be less?
No, no, the town is, the town is appropriating two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The fire department is contributing a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We are asking the town to add another forty-five thousand dollars to that two hundred and seventy-five.
Everything Angus says is correct, except we ask the town for authority to spend four hundred thousand dollars.
We got the authority to spend four hundred.
We'll have to ask the town for authority to spend.
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Four hundred and forty.
Four forty-five.
Four forty-five.
I'm confused.
All money that's going to come out of the town, our mon, our pocket, is three hundred and fifteen thousand, ninety-four.
Okay, that was my question.
Plus, plus the hundred and twenty-five thousand that the fire department has stepped forward and said that we're going to.
Jack, you were not, you were not on the board at the time.
Which will then make the four hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
When we brought this forward, we brought it forward based on, um, when, when the fire department came to us and said, we want to get the truck. They said, and, and we will.
Okay, the one twenty-five.
Put that away at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. They didn't have the authorization yet, but they gave us a verbal authorization that they were going to do that.
But how much did the town approve? Four hundred?
Town approved. The, this is, this is a great thing that you're asking, because Tim had the same question.
I'm very confused.
Tim has the same question. The town, and, and Bud jumped in, the board of selectmen understood that the town was going, the, the town approved spending four hundred thousand dollars. Then later on in the act, the conversation, we talked about where that money is going to come from. And that wasn't just for the truck, we talked about the, um, the radios.
Radio system.
We talked about all of the capital expenditures, we said, this is how much it's going to cost. And then later on, we talked about, this is where the money's going to come from.
Okay.
When, in that later on explanation, it was, it was certainly our understanding, and I believe it was board of finances, um, that the town was going to put up two seventy-five, the fire department was going to add that hundred.
So the other hundred and twenty-five that the town approved wasn't from fire department's one twenty-five, that was for other expenses.
It was, it was the fire department's.
They're, they're going to give that money to the town so the town can pay for the fire truck.
That's how we came up, that's how we came up with.
That's, you have one of them.
That's how we came up with the, uh.
Because I was thinking we still had a hundred and twenty-five to spend, we didn't have to go back to the town.
That's what Tim brought to, um, and I, I apologize for any confusion on that, um, it was not at all unclear in my head.
It's clear now in my head.
The way it was spelled out looked like we approved four hundred thousand.
Right.
But after they broke everything down and said, we're going to get financing from here, hundred and twenty-five dollars from here.
Yep, okay.
And broke it down.
Ultimately, that four hundred thousand dollar bill would be paid out of town funds. It's just where are the funds?
Right.
So you can write the check.
Money goes into our funds.
Yep.
It's very possible that we could break the contract out and we, the fire department could write the check for the chassis too.
It is not.
No.
We can't do that.
No. Okay. No, I think that would.
Yeah, we can't do that, the town has to spend that.
So the end of the day, they're looking for another forty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
Yep.
From, from the town.
Angus has to sign a contract that says we are ordering a truck for four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. I assume that's what the contract will say.
Yep.
And we need authority from the town to spend that kind of money, regardless of its sources.
The contract from the manufacturer is the four twenty-two and change.
Four twenty-two.
They don't, they did not include the other, those other items are not included in their contract.
Right, those will be, I'm assuming that miscellaneous equipment will come from other places besides on scene.
That's probably true with the fire truck, we're going to have to go.
That's right.
To, to, board of finance, a resolution or maybe one, did you just?
That this has to go to the town?
Yes.
Figuring what we can do.
I make a motion, we need to go to the town, requesting a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for to take the truck.
Is that so?
That was easy.
Yeah.
It's a star.
I still have to go to the town to make this one.
It's a star, five seconds.
I'll second.
Anyone wish to discuss it in more detail?
Do we want to do it incremental or just give them the full dollar amount?
Dollar amount, I think is what you got, it has to run our budget, we have to full dollar amount, Angus has to have the authority to spend, sign a contract. Oh, you being four twenty-two and waiting for the second?
Four, no, four forty, what is the number?
Four forty-five, four forty. Four twenty-two, Timmy said is the contract. So we're only asking forty-five thousand, motions for forty-five thousand more. Right.
Forty-five more.
Doesn't mean that it's going to all be spent, if they don't need that extra nine thousand.
Okay.
But that way Angus doesn't have to come back for another four thousand.
Yeah.
Now, is the town meeting?
Include all of these items? Yeah. And plus a couple of appointments. It'd be a good meeting.
All right, got it first. Do I have a second?
Yeah, we had a second.
And that's right, I asked any discussion? No discussion, uh, all those in favor moving to a town meeting? Ask for an additional forty-five thousand dollars to add to fire truck, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, can you spend any more money?
Not of ours. We're all, I think we're all done. Just for, um, just for, and Tim, thank you for hanging out for that. I, uh, just for information only, um, we, uh, are starting a waste reduction program up at the, uh, landfill. That will be at no expense to the town. There are a hundred and four thousand five hundred dollars are being, uh, granted to the town from PBE page. That money will be flowing, we'll probably, we will see that as a revenue and an expense. But it's not something, it's no, no town, we don't think we have to do anything about it. I think, um, I think that that money will come to the town, sit in our coffers and be spent.
Is your current thinking that we have to put the dollars out first?
No, my current thinking is based on a conversation today is that money comes to us. And we'll have that verified, but it may, we may be, um, we may be, it may be a reimbursement, but from everything I can tell and what my brief conversation uh, early this afternoon was that it is, it is a hundred and four thousand five hundred dollars that will go into our accounts and be spent.
But we have to have authority to spend that. We have to put in our budget that. How else are you gonna spend it?
Well, we can't. There you go. I don't know if any, we're just gonna have to, uh, we're going to have to.
Get approved from the town to the budget.
Yes, we're gonna have to get clarification.
Got to get EDP.
How that happens.
I assume that's true with the playground equipment too, the town will put the money out and be reimbursed?
Playground equipment, that's for sure.
Sure, all Tom's money, we're gonna spend.
Just like with the.
We'll spend five hundred thousand of it.
That was the same, the same type of grant that we used for the school group.
Which we're still.
We're waiting.
Waiting for. Okay, so we put the dollars out, okay. Which most grants are, is that a reimbursement?
I will get clarification and you'll have that for next month.
All right, any additional recommendations or action items?
Just one more question to Angus. Angus, on the recycling program, whatever it is, was that something that went to a town vote at that meeting that was held? Did they vote to do that or is it something that the towns decided to do?
The town, the town has decided to do that through the Board of Selectmen. This is a pilot program. There's no, no requirement that anyone's required to participate. But it's all paid for and the idea is to encourage folks to try to see this. So that at the end of the pilot program, we can bring it to the town to vote, this is how we're going to operate.
And is it ultimately to be a, um, a generator of some sort of money for the town?
No, it is actually to save us money. I don't think initially we're gonna see a huge savings because there's cost to both the, we're simply separating. What we're gonna see the savings on is environmental and, uh, and, and cost. Because right now, the solid waste that we're transferring, not the food scraps, but the solid waste that goes in our trash is being trucked to Pennsylvania, to landfills in Pennsylvania or Ohio. That cost is only gonna continue to go up. So if we can reduce the amount of weight, tons that goes in those trucks, it reduces our expense.
Did there seem to be compliance with the people in town who were there?
We haven't started the program yet, um, but in other towns around the state that have started this, yes, there's a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of compliance.
Well, always, the, the trucking companies participate?
Nope.
So you have to go to the.
If, if you wanna participate in this program, yes.
Otherwise, what, they, you move your own trash on your own?
Um, no, well, you usually, you use the dump.
Or.
Or you have someone pick up your trash at your house. We are not in a, we don't have a municipal trash program. So, you know, like, um, I think they started this program in Danbury. And they do have their own, a, a program. They've, there's only one hauler and that's who uses it. They have different color containers, one for food and one for, and, and the haulers are using that. We don't have that, so we're using what we do have available, which is the transfer station. So we will reduce the amount of solids, garbage, if you will, and separate out by separating out the food scraps. There will be people from the DE, from contractors that will be at the dump, instructing people, giving people ideas of how to do this, as well as distributing the colored bags that are being asked to be used. They'll be there for a couple of weeks. There will also be more and more, uh, social media and educational information coming out of the town to our residents, so the folks that do use it will not be quite unaware.
Do haulers use our, correct, the transfer station?
No. No, haulers go to.
Oh, they go straight to?
Same place we did, yep.
The street there. So there's a people incremental number of people at the transfer station. It'll pay for out of this transfer.
Pardon?
There'll be incremental number of people. We've got one or two up there now. Will there be one identifier? Is our folks gonna do this?
No. No, we, we should not have a need for that once people learn the process. That was one of Twain's big questions too. We've, we've discovered, I, I think anyway, we've learned that two people up there is, is, is the minimum of what we need to do what we're doing. And, and I don't think we need to add anyone else for this. We have in the budget, a part-time person that we are starting to utilize. But that was not for this, that was for something that we had set, set aside long before this thing.
All right, back to mine. On our agenda, the next item is monthly budget report. Before we turn to the monthly budget report, I would like to talk about the monthly budget report. Uh, actually, you received without much context from Kathy today at four o'clock, the, a final, uh, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, and she explains, she said in her note that I would talk about the transfer. So that is what we shall do here, okay? And here is, now, uh, here's my promise too. As we start this discussion, hopefully I will have a voice that suggests to you that I know what I'm talking about. And I do think that as I wander through the conversation, I will lose that confidence. Let's, uh, start this from the complete beginning. Every year, we put together a budget. We take that budget to the town. Town approves it. Town in essence approves two different items. Total budget that we're allowed to spend and each line item. During the fiscal year, we monitor the budget. And from time to time, there are budget items that exceed what the town approved. Arguably, at that moment, we should take money out of our surplus and bring it into this lineup. We and what has been experienced to me, other towns do not. We are limited on the amount of times we can change a budget item. We're limited by state legislation that we cannot change it twice, other than that, then we have to start going to the town. So what we have been doing is recognizing that we are over expending and allow that over expenditure to continue. So what we do at the end of every year is we identify over expenditures and we identify under expenditures. And we take some of the under expenditures and move it over to cover the over expenditure. So the first page you have there, the top block says, Town of Deep River Over Expenditures. I actually would have used a colon, this is arguably from Angus who is not here. I would have used a colon, so this is not officially from Angus. But nevertheless, you can see there that we have identified seven items that we have over expended for the Board of Finance who has been with us for a time, should certainly recognize that we have over expended those items and talked about it every month, and it is recorded in our minutes that we recognize over expenditures, okay? Uh, there is a second set here which has a different identifier. Over expenditures with offsetting revenue. We've been using this format for, I've been on the Board of Finance for about twenty-four years, the same format. It suggests to you, yes, we have over expended these three line items. But the reason we over expended is we generate revenue. Uh, for instance, the police, uh, police protection, you, we all see a police from time to time around town for some activity that's going on. We charge the contractor and they pay us these dollars. We have paid the police about seventy, our officer's about seventy-seven thousand seven nine five. We have collected more of that. When we get into the budget, we will see the magnitude of those collections, okay? Uh, building official, building official, there are people building. Our building official has to do more work to cover that. So the argument here is that it generates revenue. And while that's a nice distinction, it is still an over expenditure. What we need to do is cover that expenditure. We need to take dollars from other parts of the budget that are under expended and bring it into these line items. And to do that, I would like you to turn to two pages. We will be back to this excitement on first page in a moment, blah, blah. Here is the memo from Angus, says here is how we would like to cover the over expenditures in those lineups. There's a whole additional detail that we can go into if you are that curious. But for the selecting budget, which is basically, right Angus, this is your engineering expenditures that you over expended. To cover that cost, there is under expenditures in the election line item that we're recommending we move into the selecting budget to cover that over expenditure. Uh, transfer to town hall operations. You see the town hall operation has over expenditures by five thousand three hundred. That is oil, if I remember, if I remember correctly. We are recommending taking out of two lineums in the budget, some from election, some for parks and rent. Now, if you would like, I'll continue down the page and say the exact same thing. But we've got ten, I had ten, uh, actual line items that we've over expenditures. And Angus is recommending that we take money out of under expended lines to cover the over expenditures. So that the auditors and those who come behind, historians will say, isn't it impressive how they were always able to spend the exact amount of money they budgeted, so this will look like. So would, uh, if anyone, does anyone have any additional questions or curiosity of what we're doing here? Uh, and is required by our auditors to do as well, so.
I just have one question. For the police protection.
Yes.
If we make more than we spent, why aren't we taking it from that revenue rather than from employee benefits and waste removal recycling? Just out of curiosity.
These are taken from revenues, these are taken from expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
And it is a grand question because I think I, uh, watch this. I said the same thing to myself today, so you, we both, let's get credit, yes, correct. Again, building inspector generates revenues. Uh, I'm not totally convinced that insurance bonds generate revenue, but I don't think anyone is harmed by saying we do, so. Can I have a motion to accept Angus's recommendations on how to cover these over expenditures?
So move.
So move. I have a one.
Second.
I have a two. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any, any questions? All right, thank you, folks. Uh, oh. Your questions, any discussion? All those in favor of accepting Angus's recommendations to cover these over expenditures to these under expenditures? Thank you. All right, as promised, let's go back to the first page. So we've over expended ten lineups in a total amount of a hundred and thirty-two thousand eight three four nine two six. You'll notice the block right under there. We budgeted to receive certain revenues and we did not receive, uh, the budgeted amount in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. That is sad news. They are over expenditures, did not collect revenue. If you glance to the large column on the right, you will see there are revenues that we collected in excess of what the budget of five hundred and forty-nine thousand. That is good news. If you turn to the next page, there are lineups that we budgeted that we did not fully expend. By the way, for instance, the eleven thousand in elections reflects the dollars we're taking out. We did not spend, if you note school, and we should probably come back and pause for school. We did not spend two hundred and fifty-two thousand, a hundred and fifteen dollars that we had budgeted. For those who would like final numbers, if you turn to the last page that we were looking at a moment ago, all those numbers are there. Over, under expenditures of, but two hundred and fifty-two that we have just passed. Uh, over expenditures of a hundred and thirty-two, which was, uh, our principal conversation. Uh, revenues in excess, five forty-nine, revenues we didn't collect of fifty-eight. You will see that we have, this would lead you to believe we're leaving a lot, the June thirty number with surplus of six hundred and ten thousand dollars. These numbers do not reflect some of the items that we are moving into the capital account. What I cannot do for you is plus and minus. I can't do it. It's just too many numbers are moving on me. I just can't.
The accountants can't do either. They're looking at about a three hundred thousand dollars.
And that's about the number, I would think. For instance, if you're tolerant of continuing this level of excitement, here is the attempt to take the budget, the fiscal budget that ended in June thirty and recognize the items that will move into the special capital account non-recurring that we just created a moment ago. Uh, last year's budget would have us move a million point seven project into that. We received, we're going to use some ARPA funds. We're going, we got a grant from the state to cover the roof. The fire department has given us, granted us, reimbursed us a hundred and twenty-five. So we picked up five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars to cover the million four. We issued a bond of one point four two, as Tommy just chatted. That would suggest if you only looked at numbers in the budget that ended, we would be reimbursing ourselves two hundred and forty-five thousand. There is a prior year that's got, for instance, the big fire truck is in there. So I offer to you that there's work to be done on the capital account, moving numbers in. And our accountants and finance staff will work. It is beyond me. But I do believe there is surplus there, which we put a couple of conversations together. There are surpluses of about three hundred, that's my math, about three hundred. So, uh, I've explained, we are spending a hundred on playground equipment. We're spending forty on, uh, fire truck. That still leaves us money going into the surplus and we ended, although we told the town, we're gonna take about three hundred thousand dollars of surplus. But I still think we will have about two, two, oh, two million, two and a, oh, two and a half million dollars.
I think we'll still have fourteen percent.
Yeah, so I still think we're up there, so I think, uh, that is good. That is good.
Yeah, I think we still have room.
It is amazing how, how life is more comfortable when you have a surplus. We can have conversations about playground equipment. We can have conversations about trucks. We can have conversation that if you're gonna spend four hundred thousand dollars of state money and we have to put it out first, we can have that conversation comfortably.
Yep.
All right, with that in mind, let's take a tour through our budget. And since we have two new members, let's, I will add detail. Uh, hopefully you will not be like my students and take this as an opportunity to lose off. Let's go to, this is the one that we sent, we sent out on Friday. Let's go to, uh, let's go to expenses. Here's a rule of thumb that I've often offered to Board of Finance member for years now. We are in our six month of a twelve month budget. I suggest to you therefore, we should have about fifty percent left of every lineup. That is an absurd statement, but it sort of works to let us not focus on every item. Uh, with that in mind, Angus is still spending on engineering services. We have about thirty-nine, we budgeted four thousand, we have about thirty-nine percent left or about fifteen hundred dollars. Angus, do you wish to comment on that?
Only that we will probably see some pressure on that with, um, you know, increasing our, our work to, um, to prepare for the, uh, landfill, uh, capping.
Is that what your budget was going for? That is an item that needs to be addressed. Schools and meetings are a little low, but small number. Uh, the grand news is Selectmen budget's still got about fifty-seven percent, if you're tolerant of my fifty percent number. if you're tolerant of my fifty percent number. You should take comfort that that selectmen budget will come in about budget. Elections, what should we say about elections? We have probably one left in this fiscal year. The regional school will go to a referendum. Should be able to cover it with these dollars now, so I think we're okay here. We have a new registrar, independent, oh, Green Party, right Tommy?
Green Party.
Green Party, okay. Who should be educated, so I assume that somebody will be, as, as our existing registrar still needs training, so I assume that education dollars, but I think that line item will be okay. And again, I will not go through each one of these things, but when we put the budget together, town hall operations, we increased the fuel costs substantially. It seems to be holding, but as Angus pointed out to me today, we're going into the winter, so we shall see. But it seems to be holding, as select electricity seems to be holding.
January first when the prices come up?
Um, they just came down, so yes, that is correct. For those who are new to us, sewer fees. There's a sewer and we all pay fees for being on the sewer. The town picks up the cost of certainly this building and the fire department. And we pay that fee once a year. So, seems that is why it has gone to zero, okay? Sprinkler system, we have a contract for people to come in and look at our sprinkler system to make sure that it was worked under certain conditions. And I think it's a quarterly payment, so we're fine there. Let's talk about.
I might be getting some pressure from the elevator.
Really?
We've had, we've had to come in a couple times.
Sprinkle, pardon the elevator?
Well, that, that is, sprink.
Elevator and sprinkler?
Yeah, elevator inspections.
Lots of different skills. It is good to make sure elevators are safe. If you'll note it just again for a minute, state of Connecticut dog fees. The, the town clerk pays, collects fees from those who license their dog and is required to send some portion of it off to the state of Connecticut. We basically pick up, you will see in a few moments that we have, we are part, we, we pay part of the cost of the dog, what do you call it, dog? He's got dog ketchup. Animal control officer, okay? You'll see that in a few moments. We share that with Essex. The cost of licensing dog, there is still a cost going by the town here, but they send it off to the state. Let's see if I can catch them other, anyway, sorry. Assessor seems to be doing fine. She's out, seems to be, there must be a lot of things she's looking at. She's driving around, that's the only one that's under pressure, her mileage. Tax collector is fine. She hires a part-time assistant during the summer when it's busy. That's why you see the assistant almost spent down. And she has a computer service contract, that's why it's what they spent, okay? Copyer, special services, every year we raise the copyer expenses and it seems that that is under some degree of pressure. Someday, people will wonder, why did they, daddy, why did they make copies of things? Some people, that will go away someday.
That's what they told us twenty years ago.
That's what they told us about twenty years ago, didn't they? Yes. Let's see. Newsletter, let's talk about the newsletter. Angus just put out your fourth for the year, is that about right?
No.
Fiscal second for this fiscal year?
Fiscal year, we put out the second.
Second, okay. So, we budgeted twenty six, we spent twenty one. That lineum's probably under pressure, you'll do.
There is, we have one more.
Okay, so we have winter and then we'll wait spring.
We have fall and winter. Oh yeah, so we've got, okay. Wherever we are, we are, this has been under pressure for a certain amount of time.
When we get to revenue, you will see that we do sell revenues, but we made a decision a couple years ago that the cost to put these out was going to probably exceed the revenue, so.
We are, we have been increasing the cost of advertising, but it has not kept up with the increasing cost of developments.
And as I mentioned a moment ago, there is a dog fund, transfer dog fund salary. We pay part of the salary of the dog, animal control officer. And we, we lease, I guess is probably what it's called, we lease the Essex dog. And I think that lease is a periodic payment, it's not as dogs show up. It's not.
That's right.
It's not a nightly rent, we pay as an annual fee. Planning and zoning, everything is fine. I was a little surprised, but I think it's their billing, their billing time. We have consultants who are running, is that running? Or staffing our planning and zoning office. Forty three, I thought was a little low, but I think it's just billing, there's no problem. I don't think there's any problem. There's no problem. And we talked a moment ago, plan of development, we have put fifteen thousand dollars away. We have not begun to do any work on that, or have we done work and just not been built for it?
Well, we've been working for it. It either hasn't been built or that may, that may be part of the pressure that's going on the planning. Because they're, they're, that's who we're contracted with to do the POC day.
Next one I would drop by is inland wetlands. While there is work going on, the fellow who is the enforcement agent, he doesn't sort of submit a bill until like May. So, do not be thought, do not think that we are not actively involved in inland wetlands, but just not building it yet.
Doesn't planning and zoning have an enforcement agent also?
Oh well, that group that we're talking about, that, that's the fees we're paying for. We just talked about.
If you go back to that line, Carmelo, planning and zoning consulting, used to be called zone enforcement officer.
Yeah. Several people have worked for it, now we use these folks. And they're here, how many days a week are they here?
Two.
Two. And they also work in Chester, if not.
They work in Chester, they work in Westbrook. They've, they've taken on quite a few towns. And one of the benefits of them is they, while they are only opening in the office for two days a week, two part-time days a week, they do answer questions and, and correspond via email and off hours.
So, the Deep River resident had a question on planning, could they go to see him in Chester? Do they answer Deep River questions well in Chester?
I would recommend that that not be the case, but they will probably.
But they'll pick up the phone and answer.
If they send an email to them, they would probably.
Go to the lobby and call me. I will answer your question, very good. All right. Employee benefits, everything seems to be going fine there. If anyone raises a question. Police department, everything seems to be good. We have, we have put ourselves on notice that the vehicle maintenance line is, is currently over expended, will probably continue to be over expended. So, just like we did a few moments ago, next year we will probably, we'll, we'll see what that total is and we will need to address it at the end of the year. And, here you go, so, special fund, we, we arbitrarily place a number of thirty thousand dollars in our budget every year for police services, so when they're stationed. And they will, they will spend, we have no idea how many jobs they will be called upon. That number reflects how much they have, we have paid out to date. When we get to revenues, you will see that the revenues are in excess of that. Matter of fact, if you looked at your sheet, I could, no, no, different here. We collect more than that. It covers, as told to me by Mr. Smith, it covers the gas, the automobile and a few other costs. And we generally, if you looked at expenses and revenues, it looks like we make money off of that.
We do, but not as much as it looks like, because as you say, it's covering expenses for the cars. It's covering the additional tax burden that goes on.
That's right, they are paid. We have to pay social security on that and we pay a pension.
That's right.
Pension, so, yes. Everyone's thought that should be looked at. Tim has left, I'm in the fire department. They've over expended their training a lot.
I, I looked into that a little bit today and there are a couple of, I need to talk with them, but there are a couple of items that are in, are in the training bills that I don't think should be there, so we're going to talk with them.
Certainly six months and they train a lot and they should train a lot, so. Drop your eyes down to, Angus, I can't remember. In the fire department budget, there's fireman incentive program. That is their pension plan, correct?
Uh, yes.
The state of Connecticut passed many, many years ago that has incentive to help recruit volunteer firemen. They could get from the town a pension after they have served, I forget how many years. Does anybody remember how many years?
Twenty.
Twenty. It's a relative bid and.
It's too late to maybe get it.
We have our pension people who will do this and we have them make the annual contribution. We haven't paid it yet, okay? And the supplemental insurance, there were some problems a few years ago that firemen were taking, anybody can correct this, firemen were taking their own automobiles to sites, right? Fire sites and getting.
That was, that was the catalyst for this, but this supplemental insurance covers them if they're on their way to or from the fire and other, other.
If they're injured in the fire, this picks up some salary and that.
It's just additional, additional coverage, yeah.
Civil preparedness, I encourage you to glance at, we budgeted fifteen hundred dollars. We haven't spent it yet, but that, that is an area that's going to be.
We will talk about it in future budget, yeah.
If you think of all the horrible things that can happen and we need to have a plane and maybe someone who is available to handle those kinds of things. Highway department.
We have that, we just don't pay them right now. Like, in this budget, we'll, we'll discuss whether we establish a stipend for the emergency operations, correct?
It's a lot of responsibility on somebody during storm.
It's a lot of work.
Highway department seems to be doing fine at the moment. You know where I want to go back to, I apologize for this. Let's go all the way back, I do apologize. Let's go all the way back to special services. Yes, I apologize. We have a contingency in special services, twelve thousand dollars. We have spent ten thousand nine hundred, eight hundred and ninety dollars. All of the costs to celebrate our.
Yep.
No?
No, I looked after our conversation, I looked into that too. There's probably four or five thousand dollars that is reimbursed and we can talk about that.
So, we have something in here that, other things were.
There, well, we had a, an eviction.
Oh yeah.
A few years ago. That woman, it's, it's a whole legal rigmarole. But, we're continuing to pay for her, her storage and she reimburses us. We have not yet been able to get a contract transferred over to her. But that's a long, long, long conversation about her political beliefs. She doesn't believe she should pay any taxes, anything like that. As long as she continues to reimburse us, we are not quite able to actually auction these things off. So, that's there, because we don't have anywhere else to put it.
No, I just can't think of any.
And that's, so that's about four or five thousand dollars already this year that's been spent. That's why that gets stress on it. But that money is, is in our reserves. I can show you the detail of it. That money is back in here, so while we have overspent that line, it's not.
Not the celebration.
Not, not the celebration. And we're going to have to fix that, I just don't have a solution for it yet, because that line is going to always be overspent as long as that.
It seems, the story sounds like, there's, there's going to be pressure on that line. Glad I revisited.
We're going to, we're going to have to figure out what to put, where to put that and maybe create another line, a sub, a sub line or something like that. Really, I'd like to get it resolved, but we just haven't been, she, she won't assume.
There's stories in the world.
This is a crazy one.
Sounds like lawyers have already.
Oh yeah.
Provided some guidance there.
Oh yeah.
Highway department.
Not the guidance that I want.
Where there's a will, there's a way, right?
Well, that's what we're looking for.
All right, I, let's stop at waste removal. We now have officially two people up at the.
Yes.
Up there, two full-time people?
Yep.
Are you, there's also, you're considering a part-time?
We have, in this budget, there is budgeted for a part-time.
Oh, we had two and a half people up there?
We had two and a half people up there, yeah. We combined them rather than have full-time and part-time, we combined them.
And certainly my rule of thumb, fifty percent, seventy percent left would certainly confirm that we have not, we have not people up there as long as we thought we would. Visiting nurses, you will note under public health, that is a contract which is paid right at the beginning of the fiscal year, isn't it?
No, if you're looking at, if you're looking at the health district, that's.
LV, that's LVV.
Yeah, that's, that's visiting nurses. That has not been paid yet.
Oh, it hasn't? When do we pay them, two of the years?
We pay them at our leisure.
There you go. Who could ask for more than that? Great leisure. And they seem to be tolerant of that, okay? Municipal library, there is a head librarian, assistant librarian and assistants and they seem to be living well within their budget. The reason you see forty thousand, six hundred dollars, the town gives them that to run their programs and we give them that in, in July, that is why it is totally spent. Parks and recs is, it should be a little bit simpler than it is. There's lots of different programs that take place in park and rec and they seem to have dollars moving at various places. But the one I want to focus you on is maintenance of facilities. And now that you're, we budgeted twenty thousand five, we have spent thirty four, six thirty five and here we are only in December. Angus, take it away.
Again, there is, there is a lot of money that has been spent on that that would be over on the capital. So, there's, there's about eight thousand dollars that would come out of that, that we've already spent.
And I assume there's going to be substantial maintenance as we go into spring, so this would be a line item.
What we, what we are seeing though, is something that we did not anticipate when we built the budget, is repairs to Plattewood Park baseball field. That, that was really, this year's drought, really had a severe impact out there.
Really?
We're working on that. Getting that back to where.
Is there irrigation there now?
There is irrigation there, it was not, it was not properly placed. So, part of the expense here is we had to send someone out to redo the irrigation out there.
Did they have to dig it up and everything?
Yep.
Okay. Wow. So, anyhow, I, I just picked up pressure.
That's going to be, there will cease some pressure, but it is not fourteen thousand dollars overspent at this point.
Well, it's not.
I would suggest it's, it's probably five thousand, maybe four thousand.
Overspent?
Yeah.
Okay. So what, there's just bills in there that shouldn't be there?
Yeah, things, things are misplaced from, from the capital that will come up too later on.
Fountain Hill for story for folks, Fountain Hill Cemetery, several years ago, Fountain Hill was a vibrant organization. It is still vibrant, that was not the way to start that conversation on. The state of Connecticut has a law that not all cemeteries are vibrant and the town that they are housed in has a responsibility to those who went before it to take over if it cannot be taken over itself. So, the compromise we had with the board that is now there is that the town would give them thirty five thousand dollars a year in anticipation that eventually we will be taking over more and more of that obligation. Now, you've had recent conversations with them, thirty five seems to be adequate there?
Thirty five is adequate for now and the thinking is that it will be adequate for considerable amount of time longer. What I reminded them, and I remind all of us, is that when we established this thirty five thousand dollars, it was established so that in anticipation that we would be taking it, as you said, but also in an effort to make that final taking less traumatic. Rather than going in and having to spend, all of a sudden we've got to increase our budget by a hundred and fifty. We were going to gradually increase it. We actually started this at twenty five, moved it up to thirty five. And, and they have been, they have been comfortable at that thirty five and are comfortable now. And, and the current thinking from the board is that they will be comfortable with this for some time, which is great. I just, I, I want to continue to remind folks that it made, I need them to look five or ten years down the road, all the time. We, we continue with the, the thinking on the creation of this fund, which was to lessen the blow when it does come.
Certainly, the way you've told the story, at least both of us have done, would suggest that we should be increasing that every year so that that shock does not come, but.
They used to be, they used to be very.
Oh, they had lots of money.
They used to have lots of money and long story, very stories, they didn't have any. And new, new management paid men and all that kind of stuff and they've stabilized it. And the wife was on it for a little while and they need, they need this money, they needed it, they needed it then, now it's.
They need it now.
They need it now, but they really needed it then.
Yep.
And it's, you know, they're, they're doing a much better job of, you know, controlling things, considering how bad things went.
And that, and this is, this is money well spent, I think, because that has become a quasi-town park. A lot of folks are out walking, a lot of kids are up there playing in the park.
There's lots of people who like to walk in cemeteries.
I know there are.
There's lots of people.
Well, I would do is remind them to pick up after your dog.
Their dog poop.
Correct. Uh, okay, good, and we should also throw a commercial, there are all volunteers up there and uh, like most volunteers, they're.
There is, there.
They're getting up there.
There is, there is paid.
There is paid.
They do have a groundskeeper, but the town crew goes in there and cuts grass as well, don't, don't get out of it. They do out and they winter coat them.
Winter is town owned.
But we do.
It's a cemetery, yeah. It's town owned, yeah.
That's, that's, and we don't um.
Who maintains the line on Essex Street?
That's private, completely private.
That's the, that's the Congregational Church.
Yeah, that's.
No, that's right, that's part of the church, right? That's your neighbor, that's your neighbors.
That's why it's not Essex Street, it's on Essex Street.
Um, alright, we got redemption debt, Tommy went through the redemption with the debt, we do, so I'll, I think we're fine in debt right now. Um, elementary, uh, and I'm gonna turn it over to Angus who will share with you his legal expertise. What's going on with the. Could you share the new thinking on schools and budgets?
I will, um, but I will introduce it with, I do not have all of the facts yet. But I am under the, I have been advised that um. There was a, a legal challenge up in, at the region that Amity would, Amity Schools. I think it's Amity and Woodbridge Shares of Regional Schools.
Region five.
There you go, yeah, there you go, Region Five. Um, so they're just a little bit younger than us. In any case, there was a, a question about the reimbursement of surplus funds from the schools. They went to court and the court determined that the statute is um. That uh, the schools do not, in fact. In fact, the statute says that schools are not to um reimburse any towns of any surplus, they're to keep that money. And utilize that for um, to lessen the next year's expenses. I've, I've got a million problems with it as I know about it right now. But uh. Region Four administration seems to believe, and their auditors also believe, that that is in fact the law. And that there is no reimbursement back to the town for any of these expenditures. I find it incredibly coincidental that this happens in the middle, in the year that we are going to have huge reimbursements. Because the surplus at the schools were so great, but that's just um. Probably shouldn't even verbalize that thinking because it's probably not accurate, but.
Just gives them another avenue to go buy another sports complex more promptly, right?
Those are the first things that come to mind. But I don't, I don't know how that can, how that can happen. As I said, I'm learning about it, I don't know, the Board of Education has not made any decisions yet. If this is in fact law, then the Board of Education doesn't have any decision to make. Then that's, that's all I know right now.
The intent of it is to lessen next year's. Or not, as you say, to go spend it.
Well, but that depends on how you build your budget.
Right.
It, it, it gives them, this year it gives them probably close to a half a million dollars of play. Now, we have to believe that we, that our Board of Education and our administrators are working with the best interest of the town. But their charge is the best interest of the schools, so. We will have to pay attention, a little bit more attention to how they build their budgets. But I don't have a, I don't have any answers to how this is going to play out yet.
You know, most of Angus's comments on all of them were for regional school. Curiosity comes how that is applied to the elementary, if you saw on this sheet, there'd be sixty thousand dollars back.
It is not. It is not at all applied, in my estimation now. We don't give them their budgeted money and then they give it back to us, we simply write all of the checks. So at the end of the year, if there's sixty thousand dollars surplus, it's simply not, it has not come out of our general fund yet. So there should, there never is a reimbursement from the elementary school, it's just an under expenditure. So I, and this law only applies to regional schools.
Well, you guys know any regions.
So we will see it from the supervision, where we won't get that, if, if this plays out as I expected to. We won't see any reimbursement from the uh.
Supervision.
Supervision and from Region Four.
The last couple of years we've been getting, now these are COVID years.
These are COVID years.
We're getting a hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
This is the last year of COVID and that was going to be a whopper, it was gonna be four or five hundred thousand dollars. So that's what we know right now.
That's correct, that's correct, and it then bangs up against, you're gonna take over here, you in all the words. State law says you cannot.
Oh, it bangs that up against NBR.
Yes, could you explain that to?
Well, I'm not sure NBR is the proper terminology, is it? Veridic education guys?
Yes.
Okay, it's a minimum budget requirements.
You can't cut, you can't cut a budget to a certain percentage, you can't cut it from the previous year. There's a, a standard, I mean Paul would know because she was on there, there's a, a number that you can't go below. We ran to a, at elementary.
At the elementary school, if you would budget it for a simple math, and I'm, and I'm not even sure of the percentage, but for simple math, they're gonna make up some numbers. Let's say that you budgeted ten thousand, ten million dollars for the school. The next year, for one reason or another, they, they were able to eliminate a teacher or two teachers. None, no programs were affected, just the population was reduced by a certain amount. You cannot reduce the mu, the budget, and, and say eliminating those two teachers took away a million dollars from the ten million dollars. That's ten percent. But the limit is five percent, you, so you, you can't reduce more than five.
That's when the alarm bells go off.
So, and this is what happened at the elementary school. We, we lost a bunch of teachers because we didn't need them anymore, we didn't lose any programs, we didn't do, lose anything. Um, in the end, we had to, we budgeted for that. The state came down and said, no, you violated the NBR regulations, you need to give the school back sixty-one thousand dollars. That's what we did, in the end we got it in the surplus, but um. It, it's a, it's very, very convoluted, it's something that needs to change, there's constant pressure being put on the state to change that rule. But um, especially in communities like ours where the populations are going down, but the state has.
Two stories, they didn't have either a happy ending or not a happy ending. They use surplus to reduce their budget. Because as Dwayne pointed out, you can't, well, we have to give them the same amount, it's an absurd answer.
That's right, no, it's, it's, it's a state, it's just the idiots on tail, you can go around and around and around. It's, it's gonna make it impossible.
So.
So the enrollment drops down.
Enrollment drops down.
And prices keep going up.
Yeah, it's.
Well, you, there's nothing you can do about it in regional cities. Right now, we can still have control over the, on the elementary school, but that is going to become regionalized at some point as well. It's gonna have to, because there are budgetary requirements just to maintain a building, it doesn't matter how many kids you have in it.
Still need the heat, still need the power, still need the principal, still need a nurse.
Yep, all of those things are, no matter how many kids you have in there, you still have to pay for those things.
Is there gonna be any discussion about regional?
There's been a lot of discussion.
On an offer.
I mean, I was.
A couple of decades it's been going on.
How many years has that been happening?
It's all been a while.
There's, there's a lot more now, and I think, I think, I think there have been some studies that have been done that pretty soon will go public with. Expect, expected expenditures for each town, for each of these schools, number one, to maintain them, but number two, to actually maintain them. What, what, what these buildings need to be continued as a school for these few kids. And I think once the towns see that, there will be a pretty clear understanding that we simply can't afford to keep three on elementary schools. Um, in these three little towns. But tried it twice, twice already that I'm aware of, my time here, so.
Alright, sounds good, yeah, well, it sounds good, remember, people here want to open up the, now the rest of the story, what was that, Paul Harvey, none of you. Alright, it's capital that we turn to, to finish our conversation on expenditures. Um, what is somewhat interesting is the only capital, remember we're in the sixth month. The only capital that we have spent in our budget is for the fire stations and it's the, was it the doors up there in Winter, but the other thing, I mean.
Well, you can go down this and we can look and see, um, you know, breathing apparatus. We had a grant application and that was just denied, so we'll see those get purchased.
We find it good, uh, every year because we have those breathing apparatus.
Yep, well, we had a, we had a grant that we've applied for and hoped and we did not get that, so we will see that spent. Um, the Lo, LoSiP infrastructure grant, that's there every year.
So we get reimbursed from the state, that's correct. And there's the revow, we commented on a moment ago, we put money aside, knowing that would come about.
You know, we don't, what we'll see is once we establish this fund, that thirty-five thousand dollars will be moved over to that. Plus the twenty-five from last year.
And whatever, yeah, exactly. Library windows, spring, or you have asked them to begin on one of it.
Yep.
Uh, new road at the transfer station, spring.
Yep.
And oil containment, spring. And uh.
Mark upgrades is where you're gonna see, you will see some expenditures there because those were from. In the other cap, in the other uh, in the other line, mark and rack stuff.
And while he was in last year's budget, we put money aside for salary study survey. The lady that is doing it for us has had some personal things, so it should be, it will be available to us, certainly.
It'll be available for this budget, yeah.
I had hoped it would come across.
Yep.
Now, um, does it not make sense that we should stop and look at the bottom line? Catchy phrase, the bottom line, we budgeted nineteen million dollars of expenditures, we have spent eight today. We've got close to eleven million dollars left. I don't know what that means.
Well.
I don't know how to put it, we just talked about all the different stories, I mean it uh. Things that we're doing okay if you looked at bottom line numbers. Alright? With that in mind, let's take a brief tour of revenues, and again, I'm gonna offer you the same story. Um, and this goes to Carl's question, it'll be the first thing we look at, revenue report. First item, we, our workhorse of our finding, funding is our tax, our taxes, property taxes. We budgeted fifteen million, six hundred and eleven thousand, million dollars, okay? We have collected, well, we've got thirty-six left, which is, I think, very aggressive. Most of it comes in in July, we'll collect the second payment for uh, property taxes, but that's pretty low, so I think we're doing very, very well there. Um, property taxes in arrears, we're doing very well. We budgeted a hundred and twenty, we've got our sixty-eight. As Tommy commented, we'll comment again. Goes as follows, we are going to sell eight properties that had not sold, is that the right number, eight properties?
There were four.
Four properties?
No, actually there were six.
Six, there you go.
One um, got paid.
Yes, only one was paid, okay.
One was paid, two um, did not get the minimum bid, three was sold.
That's right, a couple that were just locked and that type of thing, so yes, so we picked up about two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
We picked up one hundred thousand dollars from the tax sale.
Yes.
And the, the other, the other hundred and twenty that Kate is telling us about, that's just people paying, I don't know.
I don't believe, at least when I chatted with Kathy, I don't believe those numbers are in here.
They must not be.
They're not in here. So that is good, there's, while there looks to be adequate funds, more than adequate funds, there's more adequate funds available to us.
Yeah.
Motor vehicle, we budgeted a hundred and twenty, we received what, forty-four, forty-five now, most of that comes in. We set the tax base in October, anyone who buys a new car after October gets a supplemental bill, which comes in in January. So I think we're doing fine with revenues, uh, which is the workhorse of our, our funding here. Um, and again, for those who have just joining us, the town has put in several sewer systems in different parts. Uh, for instance, Union Street, my street, and the side streets, they put in sewers. And they assessed all the owners two thousand dollars, which is why you see two K S A assessment, and you see Union Street also. Um, and those folks pay period. If you sell your house, if you wish to sell your house, you must pay off the lien. You cannot convey your house to someone if the town's got a lien on your property, so they must pay it off. Uh, Union Street was done in what, eighty or something, so most of that is done. There was a supplement to that, I say supplement, I'm misusing supplement. Um, the town crew put in sewers up to, where'd they go, up on?
Lord's Lane.
Lord's Lane, and so there's a second line item, they were assessed too. The newer assess, the newer um, sewers. Uh, which one are you, you sewers, aren't you?
I was the first on high street.
You were the first, you were the first one, yeah, you were the very, no, you weren't, so it's me, I'm wearing the second one. There's a, the, the town back, Joe Wajewski, town got almost a hundred percent grant to go down Main Street and that type of thing, so there was no assessment there. You may have come off of that.
They had done.
Oh, we had.
The second one, and then the second one they started to say, now, the reason I say we should point this out, Tommy just went through. We have obligation, citizens out of Deep River have obligation to pay the cost of putting in sewers. Main Street, along, down by the river and that type of thing, so the assessment is given to the town. And we use that to pay the, the interest, the principal. The fee that people pay on a, on my annual basis goes to the water pollution to run the plant, but we get the assessment because we pay the bill, so. And most of that, we continue to get money in, but it seems to be someday that's going to go away.
If we don't build more.
If you don't build more, that's correct. And we have ambitions, we're an ambitious group. Um, does anyone else have any questions on revenues? This is temptation, just talking about different revenue sources, but we're doing pretty good, I think, on revenues. It's, oh, there you go, let's go down to public service police, way down by the bottom. Alright, we talked about we have paid uh, um, our patrolman, what, twenty-eight thousand dollars, is that the right number? You can see here we've collected forty-five, six so far. No, so the way we're at. We're un, we've overpaid our collection, I don't have the numbers with me, uh, there's, there's a timing issue there, usually we generate more money, so.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we just.
We just haven't built it.
Probably got a month out that we haven't.
Yeah, we don't, we put here what we've collected, not what we've built, so. Alright, um, that's about it, other than you look at the total bottom line, again, bottom line should make sense. We, we have revenues of eighteen, uh, we've collected eleven, seven, eleven, so. I think the two bottom line stories tell us that we should be doing pretty well. Does anyone wish to rephrase it?
I think the only thing I would point out is that thirty-nine percent. Remember that most of our taxes are collected in.
July.
In July. December will, or January will get a bunch more, and with that, you'll see that number will decrease dramatically just, just in that. Uh, but it's not a fifty-fifty because July and December, most of our taxes are in July.
Cause you get automobiles and personal property, everything in July, so that is correct.
And a lot of folks pay in December to get done, before the, before the beginning of the new year.
That's correct, you'd still take it for the taxes, don't you?
Going back to the police, have we ever raised our rates?
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent, oh, two years ago.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, we raised them um, to be, not only to be competitive with the other towns, but to fit, to. In order to keep up with their additional expenses.
Do other towns charge more?
No.
Oh, okay.
We charge, we charge more than the other towns.
Do we?
Not a lot, but a little bit.
Alright, other business, anyone else have other business they'd like to bring up? Have some other business, um. Wait, I was asked for a motion to adjourn, can I just proclaim adjournment, do I have that authority, didn't I, no? No? No. It's, anyway, it's good to the king, I mean, I was just elected king tonight, I should have that authority.
Have your, have your.
John and I will make the changes. Do I have, would anyone like to?
I'm decided to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second, and second, all those big ones.